Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 8th meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Luizzi.
Present.
Trustee Leo.
Present.
Trustee Al Fassi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. Before we start tonight's meeting, the board and I understand and we respect the sensitivity of the public who are here tonight to discuss the Marbledale Road Brownfield Project. We have people who we invited who want to thank them for coming here tonight from both the DEC, the Department of Health, to answer all of your questions that you're going to have here tonight. We're going to quickly get through our normal order of business tonight. We're actually hiring a police officer tonight, I'm very pleased about that. So I ask everyone just to be patient while we get through our normal course of business, should take about fifteen minutes or so, and then we're going to get into some discussion we're going to have with DEC, and then we're going to be able to take everyone's comments. So the first item on our agenda tonight is the appointment and swearing-in of Stephen J. McCann to the position of police officer effective August 1, 2016. I will make the motion to appoint Stephen J. McCann to this position of police officer effective August 1, 2016. Do I have a second to that?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And now I'm going to ask Mr. McCann if he'd like to come on up and take the oath.
Hi.
Hi, Stephen J. McCann.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Did you want to say a word or two?
Yeah.
I just want to say I think we've never had Channel 4, Channel 12 here for a swearing-in, so congratulations, Stephen.
Thank you. I just want to say a quick few words. Thank you to the Tuckahoe Police Department and the village board for giving me this opportunity to serve as a Tuckahoe police officer. It means so much to me and my family as well, and I will perform my job to the best of my abilities. Thanks so much.
Thank you. For those who don't know, Stephen is a local Tuckahoe resident, nice young lad, and he's going to be a great addition to our department, so congratulations on behalf of all of us here. Thank you. All right, as promised, we're going to quickly get through our business here. There are no presentations tonight other than the presentation we're going to have when we hear from the members of the DEC and DOH tonight, that's going to be a little bit later. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is Proposed Amendment to Section 21-119A of the Village Code of the Village of Tuckahoe entitled Parking Permit and Meter Zones: Regulating Parking Permit and Meter Zones on Midland Place. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. This public hearing is now open. This is required to enable the village to change the meter locations on Midland Avenue?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. To add parking meters to Midland Place, you need a local law, which what this does, it basically is going to put, allows you to put parking meters in front of the new development there. It doesn't mean, this doesn't say that you're going to do it, it just means that you're going to be able to do it in the future.
Understood. Anyone from the public wish to talk about this issue? Anyone from the board? And if not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. The second public hearing is Proposed Local Law Authorizing a Property Tax Levy in Excess of the Limit Established in General Municipal Law, Section 3-C. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. The public hearing on this is open. This is something we do every year. We've done this since the governor imposed the 2% tax cap, and this enables the board to, in case there is any kind of catastrophic issue where they needed to exceed the 2% limit, they would have to actually have a public law in place in order to do that, so it's more of a safety mechanism that we put in place. Anybody from the public wish to talk about this? Anybody from the board? Not, then do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. The next is the adoption of minutes, the approval of the minutes of the July 11, 2016 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Then we have approval of the minutes of the July 18 special meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Any correspondences?
No.
Okay, that's going to bring us to the first opportunity to talk to the board on any of these items that we're conducting business on now. And, okay, then we're going to move on to our resolutions. Our first resolution is approving refunds totaling $4,723.18 for the list of properties that follow, having received a reduction in the 2016 assessments by the Small Claims Assessment Review Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
In favor. Next is Resolution Number Two, approving a license agreement with the homeowners of 8 Everett Street to place a fence on village property. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution Number Three is accepting and awarding the following high bid for police department surplus equipment, which was advertised through legal notice and available for auction on eBay from July 21 to July 31, 2016. This is a 2012 Dodge Charger, and we are going to accept the highest bid of $11,100 awarded to Annette Merkamp from Germany, which is amazing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
Favor, I wonder how much it costs to ship that car there? Resolution Number Four is authorizing the proposed local law amendment to Section 21-119A of the Village Code of the Village of Tuckahoe entitled Parking Permit and Meter Zones: Regulating Parking Permit and Meter Zones on Midland Place. So this is adopting a local law. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution Number Five is authorizing the proposed local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, Section 3-C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution Number Six is authorizing the ratification of a memorandum of agreement with Local 456 IBT. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution Number Seven is authorizing a donation of a foosball table for our community center from Lisa J. Lai and family. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry, just thank you very much for that donation.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
In favor. And our last resolution is Resolution Number Eight, authorizing approving payment of vouchers in the amount of $369,014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Al Fassi.
In favor.
In favor. Under miscellaneous business, I'm going to mention that our village offices will be closed on Labor Day, which is September 5. The next regular village board meeting will be on Monday, September 19. The Tuckahoe Challenge Road Race will be on September 18, and there will be a residents' meeting, a town hall residents' meeting, which will be on August 24, and that's going to be in the lobby of Westy's Storage down on Marbledale Road. And that's going to bring us quickly to our Board of Trustees member reports, and as always, we start with yours and my deputy mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. I'll keep my comments brief. I just want to acknowledge briefly the fireworks on 7/16, and I wanted to extend my gratitude to David Pope and the Pope Foundation for really what was an incredible show and seems to eclipse itself every single year. It's a great event for our community. I also wanted to thank John Galuzzi for organizing the entertainment, for the police for keeping us safe, and for the DPW for making sure that everything was taken care of and put back to the way it was, so gratitude to all for a great celebration of our country and of our village.
Thank you. Trustee Luizzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I also will keep my comments brief. As I mentioned last month, the Tuckahoe Senior Center that's located at Father Fata Hall is closed for the month of August. They will resume activities on September, which is a Tuesday, the 6th. I do have a brief report from the History Committee, which I would like to remind everyone, meets here every Wednesday, right outside the clerk's office here, from 9 to 12 every Wednesday. And what they have in the hopper this month is the preparation for the celebration commemorating the 100th anniversary of the United States entry into World War I. They are partnering with other history committees in Lower Westchester to sponsor a number of public programs to commemorate this historic event. Currently, there are now volumes of photos of war activities available for viewing if you come up here on Wednesday or by appointment. We also would like to point out that Nick Zanzano is doing an unbelievable job adding some really wonderful photographs to the website. And as always, we welcome residents and former residents who have artifacts or articles pertaining to the history of Tuckahoe to please contact the Tuckahoe History Committee. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Trustee Leo?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it as brief as well. I just want to remind everybody, the library has many wonderful programs, please check their website for programs and times and dates. Just this month, I just want to point out one item, the Tuckahoe will be having the Italian cooking demonstration by Toscano Restaurant, which is a really good restaurant, so that takes place on Tuesday, August 23 at 11:30 a.m. If you're available, you know, call the library and register. That's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. And Trustee Al Fassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really have no other comments except I would like to echo my colleague, Trustee Giordano's sentiments on the 4th of July celebration, our fireworks celebration here in Tuckahoe. It's my favorite event, everyone did a wonderful job. Thank you to all who came out. That's all.
That was quick, thank you. All right, that's going to bring us to our section of the agenda where we actually have a discussion, and then immediately after that, we're going to get to the opportunity for everyone to come to the podium and ask questions. First off, I want to thank all the residents who've come out tonight. I know you brought some of your children here, so it's, I think it's very kind that you actually came down. It's important that we hear from you, that you express, you know, your concerns. We've seen it on flyers, we've seen, we've all seen it on social media, I've gotten tremendous amount of emails, so we pretty much understand the common thread here. I know that there is a lot of Waverly School parents who are here with concerns, and I just want to say that I'm very fortunate that when, you know, when we knew that you were all coming, I was able to get the team that's here, and I'm going to talk about the team in just a second. We've actually been very successful in bringing in members from the property owner. We have here tonight Bill Cannavan from HES, that's the name of the firm?
Hydro Environmental Solutions.
Hydro Environmental Solutions. We have members from the New York State DEC. We have Kevin Carpenter who's here tonight, he's the project manager for this Brownfield site. We have Randy Witcher, I always get that wrong, which, okay. People will recognize Randy, he was here for quite a few hours at the meeting on April 14 answering questions at that meeting. We have Amen, and I get this wrong all the time, Ammaragbi, thank you very much, and I think he's everyone's boss. So he's the senior chief or the chief of the folks who are here tonight. From the Department of Health, I want to thank them very much for coming. We have Renata Ockerby, she is the DOH project manager for this site. Stephen Karpinski, he's the Associate Regional Section Chief. And we have Stephen Behringer, who is also an associate with the Department of Health. So as you see, we brought in the right people to answer not only your questions but our questions, because we have some similar questions, and these are the folks who will be able to answer them. So we brought the experts in, so we're going to give everyone that opportunity to ask. Before we hear from these folks, I just want to explain a few things as I see them here on this whole project. First, the Brownfield site is private property. It's not owned by the Village of Tuckahoe. It's located in the Village of Tuckahoe. This village board has no legal authority or standing to take possession of the land or to make, or to make the private property owner do something with their property if it stays within the parameters of land use. So that's important. We don't have that authority, but however, I've made myself very loud and clear for quite a few months now that this private property owner will be held to the strict requirements, standards, and oversight that we have at our discretion. So we do have some discretion to make sure that he is going to develop his property, just like anyone who wants to develop their property. It is our responsibility to make sure that it is done right. Aside from the approvals that this private property owner has received under the BCP program, this private property owner will be attending the planning board at their next meeting, which is going to be on September 15. We do anticipate that the planning board is going to make a decision on this applicant one way or the other at that meeting. If the planning board approves the application along with all of the conditions that the DEC, the Department of Health, and the village consultants, because we've had our consultants weigh in and provide some suggestions for the planning board as well as to the DEC. So if the planning board approves the application with all these conditions, then I would expect with the large opposition that I see here tonight and that we've seen recently, that there's most likely going to be what's called an Article 78 lawsuit, which will be filed asking a judge to order a stay in the development. Alternatively to that, if the planning board denies the application, then I would expect that the property owner is going to go ahead and file an Article 78. So I think at the end of the day, you know, I like to call it as I see it, that this application is going to be probably decided in Westchester County Court at some point. But I'm not saying that to tell anyone that they shouldn't voice their opinion, I think it's important that I get the opportunity to make it clear that that's the way I see it, because that's the way I see some of these controversial projects going in Westchester County. If either one of these legal courses of action are taken, the court is ultimately going to decide on whether or not the private property owner can move forward, starting with the Brownfield project. The public needs to know that I've been in touch with our Eastchester Town Supervisor, Tony Calavita, our county legislator Sheila Markot, Assemblywoman Amy Pollan, and State Senator George Latimer, and I've kept them all up to speed on the timeline of this entire project. Tonight, we're going to hear from the property owner's own team, the DEC and the DOH regarding the most recent and important concerns for the possibility of airborne matter to rise up and onto the Waverly School grounds, which I know is a very big concern of why a lot of people are here tonight. In terms of oversight for this project, if it's approved and it, the Brownfield project does take place, I see there's actually four levels of oversight on this project. The private property owner's remediation contractor, which is authorized by the State of New York in this field to perform the work, that's going to be the first level. The private property owner's environmental engineering firm, HES, will be a second level. The DEC is a third level, and the village, the environmental engineer that we've hired, Mike Musso, who everyone has seen at our meetings for the last year or so, that's going to be the fourth level of oversight. If this private property owner ultimately gets his approvals and moves forward with the project, I anticipate that his team is going to hold multiple and periodic meetings with the school PTA. Members of the Tuckahoe community, and I expect that the village board will be invited to those meetings as well. If the property owner fails to set up and hold these meetings, then I will make sure that the Village of Tuckahoe holds similar meetings, and I'll make sure that the village has attendance with our own experts at these meetings to provide input on behalf of our residents. So tonight, I'm going to start by asking our DEC experts here a couple of questions. What I've done is I've spent a little time and I've actually taken some of the questions that I've seen on the various emails, the signs that we see throughout the village, and I kind of want to pose these questions, maybe, I think it might, some people are a little nervous about coming to the microphone, so they may hear a question that they wanted to ask that I'm going to ask now, and they'll have now the opportunity to hear it from the DEC, and if it's a DOH question, they can respond also. So first going to ask the question that I've seen many times, which says, demand additional... The question is, demand additional testing before digging? So I guess the question is, will there be additional testing before they start digging?
You have all these people in the hallway, you can't group in your seats.
There are seats inside, can you come in? There's half a dozen seats here.
There are 50 people outside, I don't think there are 50 seats in here. Is there a way to, do they sit on the floor?
Can they sit on the floor?
Um...
Fire department might allow that.
How great information, we can't hear you.
I don't think the fire department will allow that.
Can we get some community center?
No.
Motion to meet in the community center? Anybody second?
No, we're going to keep the meeting here, but I'm trying to see, are there a lot of children out in the hallway, or?
It's a house.
Okay, all right. Look as best as we can, if everyone would just kind of squeeze, you know, squeeze in. They weren't there when we started the meeting, so I'm assuming they just came recently.
They were, they just put their hands in.
Okay.
I think it may have been fire hazard.
Fire hazard.
They can't have both of them.
No, we'll start coming.
Is it posted?
They can't really come watch at my location.
Is there any way to put a speaker out in the hallway? We don't have any amplification out in the hall? We'd have to bring in the speaker?
Many people are out there.
Two seats up here.
Two seats over there.
There are six seats there, four can't be opened.
Come on, opening that back door up.
Anyway, so let me, let me ask a question again. Additional testing, the question has been asked many times, will there be additional testing on this site before, you know, there is a demand for additional testing, so I'll throw that out there.
Okay. Yes, absolutely. We put the draft work plan out for comment. We received a lot of comments.
I can hear you.
Okay.
Identify yourself.
Kevin Carpenter, New York State DEC. I'm the current project manager for the project. So in answer to the question, yes, we put the work plan out for comments, we received many comments, and the work plan was revised, and part of the revision was that there'll be a significant amount of additional sampling before there's any excavation. And what that entails is that in any of the areas that were identified as possible source areas, there will be boring program to collect soil samples down to 15 feet, and in any of the areas where there'll be soil cutting to install foundations or any of the other development required excavation that's not related necessarily to the contamination. There will also be soil borings and soil samples collected. Furthermore, we ask that there were, would be additional wells installed, and so there will be monitoring wells in both the, above the bedrock surface and in the bedrock, and those will be at the, roughly the north, the middle, and the southern end of the former quarry. And what that will allow us to do is collect water samples before there's any construction and during construction, and we'll be able to see what the quality of the water is at the start and if the construction impacts that water quality.
So that would be the additional testing before they actually start the digging?
Correct.
I think, let's get one of the big questions that I've had, because it's, I see, I think it's a question that a lot of people in this room have. I've gotten emails from some parents who have children in Waverly School. This is a school for kindergarten and first grade, and their concern is that since it's the school that's closest to the site, and Mr. Cannavan, maybe you might be able to answer this better, so I'm not sure, I'm throwing the question out to everyone here. The concern is that once they start digging and they start disturbing and churning up soil, that some of this on a windy day is going to blow up and land on that property while the kids are out on lunch recess, and God forbid if they touch it or they digest it, that, you know, there's a problem there, obviously. So is that, can we talk about that?
Sure. So one of the things that we always do on these types of sites is implement what's called a community air monitoring plan.
Is that the CAMC?
That's the, that's the camp, yes. So that would be proactively implemented here, and what that entails is real-time collection of data on particulate or dust that could be coming from any of the disturbed soil, and also volatile chemicals that could be coming from any excavation. And the, the idea, the intent, and the, in practice, what will happen is that we control is that we control that at the site, on the Brownfield site, and keep it from leaving the site, and as we know, at this particular site, there's occupied buildings immediately adjacent to the site, much closer to the site than the Waverly School. So, because we implement this such that we keep the dust on the site, we feel that there's no, no ability for that dust to reach the school.
So when somebody says, "Well, it's a windy day," and they throw a shovel in the ground, and it's now already up in the air, how, I know you have a real-time monitoring where you're analyzing that, but if it's up and possibly flying away, how, how are you captured, or how is, is that being captured? Or, I mean, what's the logistics of that?
Yeah, so, what we do is, as part of the implementation, is before they can disturb any soil, there has to be onsite the ability to control dust. So whether that's a water mist, or foam, or some active measure to prevent the dust from getting airborne. So, we'll also be taking baseline data to see if there's already dust in the air, and then we can measure our performance against that. And that's, our intent is to be very proactive on preventing the dust from, from getting airborne. That's really the way to do it, you can't capture it once it's up, so we try to keep it from ever getting up.
Okay, alright. Next question, vapors from the site are considered a significant threat to public health. Any construction on the site will release vapors and contaminated dust. I know you just talked about dust, same, same issue with vapors? I mean, other than dust particles, vapor, same issue?
Yep, same, same principle. What we do have is a lot of data on what the soil vapors are, or what the vapors are that could be coming off of contaminated soil in the, or sources in the landfill. So we're armed with that data, and, and based on that, we know that the monitoring or action levels that we have are protective. So, if we don't exceed those action levels, then there shouldn't be an exposure concern, and health department, jump in if you want, but that's, we're fortunate here that we, we have that information ahead of time to be comfortable that our number is good. So we keep the, we keep the vapor concentrations below that level, and if it, if we start to see that there's an issue where the vapor concentrations could get higher, then we react to that, we take an action, we stop digging, we can cover the excavation, we could foam the excavation. So, it, this community air monitoring plan allows us to react in real time before we get to a point where there's odors or volatile chemicals in the air that would be at a concentration that's of concern.
Okay. Let's, I'm sorry. We'll shift off a little bit about water, I want to talk about groundwater. That was, it's not been an issue so much, I think after the decision document came out and that question and answer, which we've all read, most of the public, I'm sure, has read it too, and it seemed to address in that document that groundwater wasn't really an issue. So can you tell us why groundwater isn't an issue here, groundwater contamination?
Well, we're, we're not seeing very high concentrations of chemicals in the groundwater, for one thing. We work on sites that have significantly higher concentrations, and we have a monitoring network, which we're going to enhance to be able to monitor if any of the contaminated groundwater is leaving the site. So I guess, that's, that's the main thing.
Okay. Any of the board members have any pointed questions? I'm going to let the DEC actually kind of explain where the process is, but I, I wanted us to have that opportunity to ask you any questions, and then we'll take questions from the public. So, any of the board members have any?
Well, I, I have a question regarding the vapors. I mean, it's an open site right now, so what's the level of vapors just emitting from the site at this point? Will it, will it be greater than it is now?
I mean, oh, here you go, take that.
Sure, this is, my name is Renata Ockerbee, I'm with the State Health Department, I'm the project manager for this particular Brownfield site. Thank you. My name is Renata Ockerbee, I'm the New York State Health Department project managers for the site, and the question was about vapors. We, when we did, when we collected soil vapor samples, we have a number of data points from cores that we're taking on the site, but we also have an ambient air sample that shows that there were a handful of volatile chemicals in the ambient air. Marbledale Road is a very commercial industrial corridor, and it was not surprising to find some chemicals just in the ambient outdoor air. Now, most of those compounds were within our outdoor air range, but there were several compounds that were higher than typically found, and this was in an outdoor ambient air sample before any site work has been done.
Another question I have is that, the perception of the community is that, you know, we have this 3.5 acre site, that's a Brownfield site, but if you look at the actual project itself, right, I suspect only a small portion of the site will be affected. Is that correct? I mean, Mr. Cannavan, is that, is that correct? Because you, you're actually...
Yeah, in fact, that's one thing that I was going to describe in a little more detail. The Brownfield cleanup project only covers a portion of the former quarry, and as we suspect, the former quarry is pretty, is, has had waste in the entire quarry. So, DEC is doing a number of things related to that. We are in the planning process of collecting data in the rest of the quarry. The, the rest of the quarry is listed as a potential hazardous waste site, and what that allows us to do is to look for potentially responsible parties for who might have been responsible for any of the waste that's in there. That process is ongoing as we speak. Our Office of General Counsel is actively sending out information or looking for the potentially responsible parties. We're not waiting for that process to end, however, we're planning to, we're in the planning stages to get some initial data in the rest of the quarry, so...
But my concern is that there's some numbers thrown out. For example, 100 tons of material, or whatever the number is, is going to be excavated for argument's sake, right? I guess, people don't have a sense of what this volume is. Mr. Cannavan, I asked you to put a map together, can you kind of share that with us?
I'll make sure you can hear me. Never been accused of being quiet, so, anyway, Mr. Antonio was asking about, this is a, for the record, I'm Bill Cannavan, I'm the project manager from Hydro-Environmental Solutions. I, I will, I'll pick it up. This is a figure we put together. Dylan, you want to give me a hand here? This is Dylan Chuck, he's one of our environmental scientists. Alright, so on this map, the blue dots represent the soil pre-characterization that Kevin Carpenter was just talking about. Those are the borings that are going to 15 feet, where we're going to collect soil samples and run a whole suite of analyses. The green circles, which we really haven't talked about yet, represent areas of concern related to Freon, the refrigerant that we have in our cars, and so on. In those areas, we're going to do an investigation, and that's going to involve four soil vapor extraction wells, with wells, outlying wells, smaller one-inch wells, and we can test each of those soil vapor extraction wells by applying a vacuum, determining its effectiveness, and sampling the air. Okay, so that's also going on, it's part of the additional testing that we haven't talked about yet. The red squares, want to point to one of those, Dylan? Those red squares or rectangles represent areas that the prior remedial investigation determined were areas of concern, or source material areas for contaminants. Some of those contaminants, for the most part, were PHs or semi-volatile organic compounds. So those areas were high enough in concentration that we felt they had to be excavated and disposed of properly. The blue dots in those boxes represent the pre-characterization before we dig, or before we excavate, okay? So, I don't know, does anybody have any other questions on that?
The other question I have specifically, since I know this building will be built on piles, so the amount of soil disturbance is minimal, because you're actually taking columns of steel and, and, and puncturing them through, through the ground.
That's correct.
To support the actual building itself, correct?
Correct.
Then you have an area which you're going to excavate, which is going to have the underground tanks to, to hold the, all the rainwater coming from the site, so that it's collected, treated, and then dispersed into our sewer system, correct?
All correct.
So, the question is, if you look at the 3.5 acre site, right, only a small portion of this particular site will be, will be affected by this construction, is that correct?
Well...
What, what portion of it?
No, it's, it's not, because what you speak of is true, we have to cut utility trenches, we have to cut in our stormwater and so on, but if you, if you're looking at remedial action plan, it's a cut and fill plan, and there's like 20 or 30 cross-sections across the site. So if we, the site's generally higher here versus down here. The idea is to remove the source material and then cut and fill, take some of the material from the higher locations and put it in the lower locations. So, as much stuff onsite that can be reused, we will reuse it. Now, the soil pre-characterization that we're going to do may change that. It may be, right now, we're scheduled, based on estimates, for about 12, what, 1,200, 1,500 cubic yards of soil to be disposed of, and if you multiply that by 1.4, that gives you tons. Okay, so that, somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000 tons are going to be excavated, they'll be pre-characterized because you have to for soil disposal, and then they'll go for disposal. The rest is all going to, you know, the plan right now is to reconfigure it, use it onsite, then cap it, and build, and build a hotel and a restaurant.
One of the questions I know that we've had, and we've heard it from some of our residents, is, how long will the process take? If, let's say from the point, I know there's additional, if, if it's approved, and if it gets through a legal challenge and it's going to move forward, then at that point, there's a permit that's issued, the contractor, or the property owner is going to hire a remediation contractor. So from the time that remediation contractor starts, which I'm assuming is after that additional testing that we talked about, because he's, the remediation contractor actually is hired to perform a certain, you know, a job. Is this a two-year project, is it a six-month project, any, any idea?
Alright, so, so basically where we're at now, the, the testing, the additional testing's probably going to take six to eight weeks of fieldwork, couple weeks to get the data back, compile everything, so that's probably a three-month process.
Of just testing and analyzing that?
Testing, soil characterization, the pilot testing for the soil vapor extraction, et cetera. Then, some of that work, while it's going on, if it's been approved, some other things will also, will also happen. If I had to guess, for utilities and stormwater, things like that, it's probably a three-month process, and then the construction, once, once that stuff's in, I mean, that would probably be a better question for, for Mariotta, the design architect.
Well, that would be actually building above ground, but three months of remediating, moving this good soil from this, or this...
Yeah, I think that's fair, and if, if it's in February and it's five degrees out, it's going to, it's going to add, it's going to add time.
Right, okay.
But if the weather's favorable like it is now, then they'll move right along.
Alright, that's important, because, because some people really don't know, they're thinking it might be going on for a couple of years or something, so it's not nearly like that. Anybody else from the board, want to, before we actually kind of drop this in the laps of the DEC and then start taking some Q and A from the public?
I just wanted to follow up on the, the thread of questions regarding if there are particulates that are brought up into the air, because I, I do agree with the mayor, that I think that's probably citizens' largest concern, that you say that there are going to be agents to wet down the soil, that there may be some type of foam that's sprayed on it, but really, is that a measure, that, that's a countermeasure to something that's already occurred? I'm thinking about a Sunday, a Sunday afternoon, for example, where there's no construction going on, but there is exposed grass, or dirt, and, and there's a large, you know, a strong wind that comes and blows, blows up. Are these measures after-the-fact measures really will control, but will not prevent? And if, and if they are preventing, how does it work? How can you make our residents and, and the residents of Eastchester feel comfortable that those safeguards are going to make sure that there is no, there are no particulates that are going to loft up and are going to come in contact with us, our children, et cetera?
Sure, that's absolutely a fair question. The other, the community air monitoring plan has been somewhat enhanced from our generic plan, but one of the things that you can read in there is that we, in addition to measuring the dust quantitatively, we have a no visible dust, sort of a qualitative measure. So we're looking at that as well, that there's no visible dust leaving the site, in addition to us measuring it quantitatively. But it's, what you're asking, whether or not it's in reaction to that, no. The idea is to not let it get airborne, so there's any number of ways that that could happen. The, the work that Bill described, excavating all those different areas of potential source areas, that, all those areas won't be excavated at one time. Typically, it goes one to the next to the next, and they're finite areas, so that each area can be controlled, and each area, you set up the monitoring equipment relative to each area, you look at where upwind is, where downwind, wind is on that given day, where the closest building is. So it's all, it's all particular to the, the smaller area that you're working on, rather than the entire site. So the entire type, site won't be opened up, so to speak, during the source removal, if, if there is source there. But you could physically cover an excavation, that would be one way to do it. Tarpet, plastic, that sort of thing.
Is that, in, in effect, what would be done? And how big is this, 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 you know, these excavation sections, how large are they?
They could be tens of feet square, you know, tens of feet on each side.
And would they be covered during, when there's active construction isn't going on? It's one to, yeah.
That's, that's the biggest, that's the biggest one, 100 feet, but, yes, and that's, one of the things that's planned is that before any work starts, is that the DEC and, and the contractor and the village, and the village's engineer will all meet and work through all of the, the techniques that we're all comfortable with and, and the way that this will happen.
To make sure that there's no, not that there is a plan in place to stop something that's happened, but to stop something from happening in the first place?
Correct, that's, that's, that's the intent, is to keep it on the site, yes.
If I may respond to you, I mean directly about what happens if there's a, amen, oh, moribund from the, DC, yes. You asked what would happen if there's a, there's a high wind or heavy, heavy wind, when there's no work going on at, at the site, say, for example, Sunday morning or Sunday afternoon. What will happen is, the reality though is that even though there'll be nobody at the site, what DC requires this guy to do, the contractor, is to ensure that no excavation will be left open when there's nobody there. So, which means, say for example, I mean, that generally doesn't happen, say for example, there's a pile of dirt at the site that can potentially be airborne. What we require though is that they have to mention that the soil is covered, to the extent that no matter what sort of wind is, is blowing, the soil, the soil will remain in place. But in most cases though, especially in a place like this where we have so many residents around, we do not allow them to store soil on the surface. I mean, why, why there's nobody there?
So it would need to be in the ground when it's stored, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yes, right, yep.
So, when I go by, it seems like every gas station that's changing their tanks, that's a Brownfield cleanup site, and a lot of times you go by and you'll see that mountain of dirt, and it's got a tarp on it. You're saying that that condition is not permitted on this site here?
Well, we ensured, I mean, just like you said, what DC would prefer is that as they are digging the material, the material is loaded straight to the truck.
Okay, so they pull it out, put it in a truck, bring it to someplace else?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to get clarification on, on, the company that will be doing the remediation is vetted by the DEC?
They, they have to be qualified, yes.
Okay, and whatever they do will be reported directly to DEC and DOH?
They, they're required to implement the work plan that's approved, and DEC will inspect that work and ensure that that's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so I'm going to give you the floor to make, kind of bring us up to speed, what the, you know, where this project is, and then we're going to start to take some questions from some of our residents. So, I didn't know if there's anything more you wanted to add to the questions we've already thrown at you?
Yes, there was, there was one issue that Bill alluded to that we didn't have a chance to talk about yet, and that's a significant enhancement to the remedial action work plan, and that is that there will be a soil vapor extraction system to capture the high concentrations of Freon that we found in some areas of the site. And that, the intent of that is to keep that, those vapors from migrating from the site. So, I know that that was a significant concern, and that, that generally is, is fundamental to the Brownfield cleanup program, is don't let anything leave the site, and that could be groundwater, vapor, the dust we already spoke about. We know that there's a high concentration of Freons, and so there'll be an active remediation system designed to, to recover those Freons from the subsurface.
Did that additional plan come as a result of a lot of the public's comments?
Yes.
It did, okay. Okay, so the public was heard on that issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
And that will protect the, the adjacent buildings.
Okay.
And I think I mentioned it earlier, maybe not, that we're also planning to do additional testing of buildings in the area for soil vapor intrusion. So that's in the planning stages as well.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question related to that? So happy to hear that there have been increased measures done as a result of what the public has said. If I were the public, I may be concerned that they needed to speak to say that? Can you give some type of? No. I, I, I think that they are concerned that if they're telling you what needs to be done and you're listening to them, I think they are, deserve an explanation as to why that changed as a result of what they did.
Well. DEC has a fairly robust public participation process so that the public has an opportunity to comment. Our job is to make sure that the site is protective for the next use, in the case of the brownfield program. So not only does the public comment, but we, we would look at the draft work plan. So we just, we know that, that the vapors were a significant concern, but it doesn't mean that, that we wouldn't have addressed that otherwise, but we certainly took the public's comments and concerns and incorporated them. So.
Good question, thank you. All right, we're going to take questions. I'm going to ask just a few ground rules that, when you come up, you get a chance to ask one question. We're not going to allow people to come up twice, because obviously there's a lot of people here. Just please be mindful of the questions that were asked before you. You know, we're not going to prevent anyone from speaking, but if we're getting the same question time after time, you're kind of taken away from time that a different question may be able to come up to the microphone. So keep your comments brief. Again, understand that we brought all these folks down here from Albany. We want to get them back up there before the week is out, so thank you again for coming. It's, we do appreciate it. So anyone who would like to come to the podium, please give us your first, last name and your address.
Hi there. Good evening. Angelo Liberatore, 107 Belavista Street. I just had a quick question. So I understand, I guess this question's for the DEC. Is there a threshold with regard to the extent of chemicals or toxins in the air or in the ground that would result in a denial of any kind? Or, or does the extent of chemicals just dictate the extent of remediation?
Yes, it's, it's more the latter, that we look at what's there, and, and there are standards for groundwater that we have to reach. There's standards for soil in the brownfield cleanup program. So yes, it would affect the amount of remediation that's necessary to meet.
But is there, is there an established threshold? I don't, is there any way that you guys can say it's, it's such a toxic site that we can't allow you to develop it? Or does it come back to, you just have to do even more to remediate the property?
The site has to be made protective for human health and the environment. So to the extent that that's possible, it, we can go and do that, yeah. There's not a, there's not a threshold.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Edward Powers. I'm at Six McKinley Street, which happens to be both in Bronxville and in Tuckahoe. And you, my, you got my attention when you talked about you're going to do testing in the area. I happen to own another house, which is downstream a little bit, but it's over into the, onto the Bronxville side. So what would be the ramifications if you were testing soil in the area and you found them to be toxic and contaminated? What would be the ramifications for the property owner and for that piece of property? Thank you.
Okay, so as we investigate, continue to investigate this site, particularly the areas outside of the brownfield cleanup program, we basically follow the contamination to determine the extent. So sometimes that does happen, that contamination is on other people's properties, and then it would have to be addressed, either by us, if there was no responsible party, or by a responsible party as part of the routine cleanup.
Address meaning? Addressed meaning that would be the responsibility of the private property owner? Would that be the responsibility of Tuckahoe, Eastchester, or the state? When you say addressed, that means what?
The, no, typically it's, it's all part of the remedy. So as the remedy is implemented, whomever is implementing it would, would address that.
Don Hughes, I'm coming all the way down from Syracuse today, and I brought my student intern who's been working with me all summer on the site. We've been studying data related to the soil vapors, because that's certainly a big issue having to do with exposure to the community and buildings near the site. We've also investigated the issue of dioxins at the site, and I have good reason to believe that there's substantial amounts of dioxin at this site. We've heard a lot about protection of human health and the environment, which is DEC's core mission, and that's, to be commended for doing that. And I appreciate a lot of the changes that have been made to the remedial action work plan. But what I don't see, this is a 400-page document here, which just got released last week, there's tremendous detail about things like stormwater management, but nowhere in here is there a risk assessment. Now, a risk assessment would look at what are the actual predicted risks during, from the site due to airborne emissions, for example. That's a big issue here. That hasn't been done. I have good reason to believe that because of all the fires that have taken place at the site, that there are elevated levels of dioxin. Dioxin has not been tested at the site. I have repeatedly asked DEC to test for dioxin. I would urge you as members of this village board to demand that dioxins be tested at the site. They're extremely toxic substances, and they can become airborne when the soil is disturbed. On the way down here, we did a back-of-the-envelope calculation as to the threshold of what's set for monitoring the, the air and particles, and what might be expected to be found in dioxin levels. And it's about, it would be about eight times the level that the DOH, Department of Health, has calculated as being acceptable. We need to know. We also need to know what's lurking at the bottom of the landfill. The bottom of the landfill has not been tested. And the question I have relates to the groundwater. We're going to be, DEC has, has asked the developer to put in monitoring wells upstream, downstream of the site, not really upstream or downstream, but within the property lines of the site. What's, how is that going to change anything? How is that information going to be used? And is, and my follow-up is, are there any plans to look at contaminants, the movement of contamination off-site? It seems to be an ongoing assumption here that no contaminants have moved off-site. And I can tell you, I'm sure the contaminants have moved off-site. The groundwater moves through the site. The groundwater in the site is contaminated. It must have moved off-site. Question is not, has it? The question is how much and how far has it gone? Thank you.
Any response about the question about the groundwater?
Yes.
Yeah?
I was waiting to. So the, the answer is absolutely we are going to be looking at what has migrated from the brownfield cleanup site. So the, the wells, the wells that we have asked and which the, the volunteer has agreed to install, both in the bedrock and in, just above the bedrock, so the very bottom of the quarry, those will be installed before there's any work on the, on the development of the property. So we'll, we'll get data from that. We'll also get data during the construction. But outside of the brownfield cleanup project, so what has migrated from the area of the brownfield cleanup project, that will also be investigated. We, as I mentioned before, the balance of the quarry, both north and south of the brownfield cleanup project, is now what's called a potential hazardous waste site, or a P site. And that means that we are actively pursuing that as, as a site. In other words, we're simultaneously identifying who might be a responsible party for the waste that's in the landfill. At the same time, we're gearing up to do, start our own sampling outside of the footprint of the brownfield site. So where we've asked the new wells to be located, it's on the southern end, assuming groundwater moves generally in that direction. That will allow us to see what's leaving the brownfield site on, on its extreme southern end. And you're right, we might find some data there that says the groundwater's contaminated, and we wouldn't argue that it's, it makes sense that some has left that, that area. And so we'll be addressing that under the P site, or that may end up becoming a listed hazardous waste site. And to go a step further, it doesn't mean that we're only going to look in the boundary of what the original quarry was. We follow the plume to its extent. So we'll install wells, we'll grab water samples, and we'll keep going. It's, it's part of the program to define the nature and extent of the contamination. So we will keep going on the groundwater.
I guess what I'm wondering is, how does it affect this project?
Does it?
Does it affect? In other words, you find that this site is, is, that there's contaminants leaving the site via groundwater, is there any possibility of putting in a groundwater treatment system?
The, the general principle under the brownfield program is that you prevent migration of the contamination from the site.
So that means it might be treated? I mean, if this were a gas station, that would certainly be the case. It was dry cleaners. It seems like, you know, there's all kinds of programs, standard sites that are addressed by treating groundwater. I've seen it time and time again. Why not here? Or, or is that in, is that a possibility here?
If I may add to what Kevin just said, under the program, the, the applicant has the responsibility to ensure that whatever is within the site boundary stays within that site boundary. But however though, as, as an applicant, they are not responsible to do anything beyond their site boundary. That's why we have, that's why we have a P site. So what I'm saying though is, is, as you said, we are going to have monitoring words within the BCP site. So that will allow us to determine if there's anything that will be migrating from the BCP site to the offsite areas. The offsite areas, in, in, in this case, will be the P site. If that monitoring indicated contamination or groundwater contamination will be living inside to the, to the other area, they have the responsibility to ensure that that material does not move beyond that point. At that point, we will come back to them and say, hey, we think you need to do more than what you're doing now. How do we address the groundwater? Until we know that, we can, I mean, we can, we can presentably design a remedy to address an impact that may not exist.
Anything about the dioxin issue?
Right. So in regards to the dioxin issue, our, our approach is to look at what could have led to the dioxins. And our analysis that we do covers the contaminants that we've seen, there's scientific papers on that say these are the precursors to dioxin, and that if those precursors are not found, that there's a lower chance of dioxin. And that's the model that we're following right now. On this site, we don't see the precursors, or at least at high, high enough concentrations. There's a.
I have an eight-page memo for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I hope it will change your mind.
My name is Dawn Saviano. I live at 1 Cooley Street, and this question is for the DEC. My question is, when your workers remove these toxins, will they be wearing hazmat suits? Will they be wearing hazmat suits when they remove these toxins, the DEC, when they remove this?
Right. There will be a health and safety plan to protect the workers, and in a health and safety plan, they identify what the level of personal, what's called PPE, personal protective equipment, is. So that would be established to, relative to the contamination on this site. I'm not sure your terminology, did you say hazmat suits?
Well, will they be fully protected from these toxins?
Oh, of course.
Because obviously there, there's toxins in this dump, so I'm wondering if they will be fully protected?
Yes.
Okay, so if they're fully protected, then what is that saying to the people that live in the area?
Well.
How are we protected?
Just because there's.
Do I have to wear a hazmat suit?
No.
I don't know about that.
Well, as we stated earlier, the contamination will remain on-site. That's how we operate, that's.
How do you know that, though? How do you know it's going to remain on-site?
Because we measure it quantitatively.
Oh, really? And you're going to come by and measure where I live?
We, we will be measuring at the downwind boundary of the site.
Okay.
To keep it on-site, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
My name is Stephen Hess. My son attends the karate school adjacent to the site multiple times a week and has been there for a few years now, and we'd like for him to continue there, and we would certainly like to be assured that there is no Pandora's Box that's potentially opened up. So my question is, aside from the excavation and the capping of the, of the majority of the site, where the, where the construction, the structure's going to be, the piles that are driven, is there, is there some way to assess that they're not piercing or somehow exposing, whether it be to, to air, to, to water, to?
Yep. So that's, that's precisely why, one of the reasons that we asked for the new additional monitoring wells to be put in as a baseline. No, we can't, we can't know with certainty that they won't go into something that is down there. There's no way to know that. And that's why we wanted those wells installed.
There's no type of, of X-ray or, or other type of radar that, that can tell you where you're driving these?
Not at, not at those depths, not at those depths, no. So, so we'll get a baseline, and if that, if those piles should disturb something, we'll, we'll have the ability to monitor and react to that. And what that would mean potentially, if, if we saw an increase in groundwater contamination, then it would trigger some action to address that.
How, how deep are the piles going?
I presume to rock, but I'm not the engineer on the foundation, so I don't, don't have a good answer for that.
But is there a maximum depth, depth that they're expected to be driven?
We can get that information. I would expect until they hit a solid media like the bedrock.
You look at seventy-five feet at least, you've got to hit bedrock.
Right. That's what I'm saying, that we think it will go to bedrock. That's what I'm saying, we think it will go to bedrock.
It doesn't equate, what you're saying doesn't make sense.
I know. Should come to the microphone.
It just doesn't make sense. Fifteen feet, seventy-five feet, bedrock, not.
No, no, no.
Am I wrong?
I understand what you're saying. Remember, though, that we also say we have monitoring wells that goes down as far as seventy-five feet or so below grade. Yeah, into the bedrock. So the fifteen feet is talking about is soil, but as far as groundwater is concerned, we have an idea. I mean, not only the groundwater, because when they're drilling those wells down to the bedrock, which is probably about maybe eighty feet or more below the grade, we have the ability to have an idea about what sort of soil, or what sort of contamination within the soil mass down to that very depth. So when you say fifteen feet, that doesn't mean fifteen feet is the area where we are aware of what impact is.
Technology today doesn't allow you to be able to see further down? There's no technology today that allows for that?
Depends on what you mean by seeing further than... I mean, are you saying, I mean, we can just look at the ground and know precisely what is there, right? No.
By various measures of density, or whatever it might be, to...
Yeah. We do have soil samples, okay? We collected soil samples down to about eighty feet or so.
From boring?
Right.
Okay.
Down to about eighty feet below grade. So we have some idea about what sort of contamination is there.
Okay. Thank you.
John Mauriani, Eight Henry Street. Can I be heard? Everybody here? Okay. Had some problems with that today. I think that everybody in this room who has come here and been outside of Village Hall is probably relieved, to a certain extent, to hear what we have heard tonight, that there is going to be further testing, which, as the mayor said, is due to our speaking out about this project, which is wonderful, except that up until tonight, and before we all got here, it was zooming through on a fast track with no discernible testing, anything beyond the base. If we were not here tonight, does anybody think that this meeting would have lasted more than ten minutes?
No.
Well, but to borrow from Marc Anthony, Mayor, you said this afternoon on Channel Four, though, today, that you only want the best for Tukahoe, that's all you want. And Steve, you took umbrage at the last meeting that some people might think that you are not operating in Tukahoe's best interest. Well, you are all honorable men. Mayor Eklund says his project is good for Tukahoe, and Mayor Eklund is an honorable man. The village boards have brought development to Tukahoe from Main Street to Crestwood, and now to Marbledale Road, and you are all honorable men in putting all of those projects online. The zoning board gave fast-track variance after variance to two of the largest developments in Tukahoe's history, and we know they must be honorable men. Now, I recall that about twenty-five years ago, I had to paint my house, and I had three people in my backyard telling me that unless I covered it and got a variance and went down to Village Hall, I could not until every scrap of lead paint was off that house. It cost me a lot more money, but that took me a lot more time than these boards are meeting and pushing this stuff through. Now, I will say that the planning board did go intermediate lockstep with the zoning board's recommendations and raised very critical questions. You may not be aware, if you look back in the spring at the zoning board meetings, these are the critical questions that they asked of the developer. Are you going to use stucco? How about a blinking pedestrian signage? What about truck movement? Illumination? And, one of the major issues, the hose connection in the trash area. You will be putting that in, won't you? There was no discussion of what is going on tonight. So are not such considerations proof that they are honorable men in their own ways? Because they have bound themselves together, zoning board, planning board, this board, and the mayor says, you know, we can't do too much about what the planning board says, and this is a private property. So if they act on it, well, I think that the fact is that what you've said tonight is, the people have spoken, and these gentlemen and this woman are here in order to answer exactly the protest that you've seen. But the unanimity up until now proves that they are true to some kind of self-made code. So I just have one question of the mayor, but I like the answer from everyone. What is honorable about driving a nail straight into the poisoned underbelly of our small, beloved village? And what is to be granted, gained, and what is to be lost by this project? What is to be gained, and what is to be lost?
Mr. Mauriani, as I said in the beginning of the meeting, and I know some people don't like me keep repeating myself on this, but this is private property. The developer is as of right to go ahead and make a decision as to what he wants to do there, just like, you know what, in... Let me finish, please. To deny somebody, there's a reason why we have a village code, why we have a zoning board and a planning board, and you actually pointed on, you know, you hit on that, very important. It's, we charge those boards with analyzing these applications to make sure that these applicants are going to go ahead and build within the letter of the local law and the state law.
That includes five stories, when we are a three- to four-story village?
Well, that is, that issue went before, I don't think it was a three, I don't think it was three stories in that. Gary, what was the height variance they got?
I think it's forty-eight feet, but this is...
Let's, he's in our turn, he'll tell us.
I think it was under ten feet was the height variance. There was no floor variance on this project.
It's a five-story building.
No, what was the height variance they got?
Only one built in twenty-five years, it's five stories.
Anyway, be that as it may, that's why they're called the Zoning Board of Appeals. The code said that he had to build to, within a certain height threshold, he appealed to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a variance for that, and he was granted that variance. So now, of course, we know that was the only variance he needed, then he goes before the planning board, and he's been before the point, the applicant's been, he came to the vil, he actually came to Village Hall two years ago. So I know a lot of people, this is a fresh issue. The applicant is called Bill Wynn Development, B-I-L-W-I-N Development. And so it's been tracking through the land use boards for better part of two years now. I know a lot of the issues that the people are here for tonight are fresh issues that they've, you know, been told, you know what, come on down, and I'm very thankful that they came down. You know what? I've said over and over again, and I've said in the beginning of this meeting tonight, that I am appreciative that everyone came down and they're making this, you're asking these questions, and I'm also appreciative that I was able to get the experts here to give the answers on these. To follow up on the question, what is the benefit and what is the loss for development on Marbledale Road?
Not development, this development.
This particular development. This development or any development, it's private property, it's been vacant land for many years. For anybody to think, myself included, that it would stay vacant forever, I think it just was not bound to happen. So you know what? It's happening on our watch right now, and I think that we are doing, I think we're doing a very, very good job in making sure that we are bringing in our experts, which we've hired, that we're making sure that these agencies here are giving it the highest level of scrutiny. I know for fact that this...
But they just came here tonight and say, no, we're giving it an even higher level of scrutiny.
And I'm going to tell you that I believe the reason why is because, not just because of the last two months, that for a significant period of time, this issue has been pressed in the governor's office, and he has told his two agencies, DEC and DOH, you're going to make sure you get this right. I've heard from other people that there are brownfield sites that are much larger, who have, that have had much less of a, I'm not going, it's poor to say that, and people may say it's no excuse, I'm just telling you the way it is. And I'm just telling you that I feel very comfortable that this particular site, this application, has really gotten a very close examination at the highest level.
I didn't ask that question.
Okay.
What do you think is being in our six-tenths-of-a-square-mile village?
Mm-hmm.
It's a village, it's not even a town, it's not a city. In our village, what is to be gained, and what do you think we're losing?
I'll answer that.
According to the master plan?
No, no, I'll, no.
Like each of you.
No, well, and I'm going to give you an answer. I thought an awful lot about, for years, when Mr. Slotnik owned this property years ago, and Verizon was a tenant on the property, when there was a landscape depot company that was actually going to buy the property for a period of time, and it was going to be filled, the property would have been filled with a daily barrage of landscape contractors coming in and picking up their goods, when the site was, at one point, was considered for a maximum height, but much larger, medical office building that would have generated a tremendous amount of traffic in and out of the site. There's been multiple, because it's a permitted use in what I just explained, all these items I just explained, the zoning, the master plan made a recommendation about eight, nine years ago, that they rezone that property. And the master plan committee made a recommendation to rezone it, the village board, I was on the board at that time, accepted their opinion, and we did rezone it. And one of the uses in that new zoning category was a hotel. So did the property owner at that time say, you know what, hotel, let me shift out of a landscape depot, let me shift out of a medical office building, let me shift out of these different uses, and see if a hotel might be the best use?
Were those different uses declined by all the boards?
No, I think...
Saying, no, we do not want you to put them up?
No, no, there were never, there was never an application. This is the only application that's ever come before the planning board. So, and, so to ask what the benefit is, I think the benefit is, we're giving the opportunity for somebody who owns private property to develop his land, and I think to deny somebody...
The benefit to him, but not to the village, is there going to be tax release? Are my taxes going down? Is there going to be that 3% hotel tax?
Will there be, well, will there, okay, will the tax roll change, will the assessor assess this property at a greater threshold than it is currently today? I'm going to say absolutely yes, because today, it's taxed at vacant land. When it's taxed as a developed parcel of land, the tax is going to go up. What exactly is it going to go up? I can't say...
Didn't you already get a tax abatement from the county?
I believe you did. I believe you got like thirty million dollar tax abatement from the county.
Good for him.
Yes, yeah. So here again, it's, you know, you asked the question, that's the answer, that's the only answer I can give, you know? If this were village-owned property, we could have a much different conversation here. It's not village-owned property, so...
What's the law? I asked what the gain and the loss is.
Oh, I'm sorry, the loss? The loss of keeping it the way it is? There is no loss, it just stays the way it is. There's been no loss for how many years it's been that way?
What do you think is, very, very simple question, I ask you, what is to be gained by putting a hotel on this toxic property, and what is to be lost? And you're saying, you can't see anything? No loss?
Our children, what do we get?
What, by putting a hotel there? Let's see. By, let me, let me just, you know, there's, there's two issues here. There's the issue of the Brownfield Cleanup Project, which will, their responsibility is to make sure that the property has been remediated for any other use. And they've made it clear, and I've asked this question of them many times, do they take a look at a difference, is there a different standard for a hotel versus the landscape depot? And their answer is, and I understand this, is that they look at the zoning uses, so they look at the zoning category, and they will go ahead and make sure that the property is remediated to any particular use. So there is a different use if this were a residential neighborhood, there would be a different standard, I should say. So...
It's a residential neighborhood.
It's...
Below half.
So that's, so they're, so, so they will make sure that the property is clean. So that's the Brownfield Cleanup Project. Now we shift over to, you know, there's some people who are vocal about, they don't want a hotel, maybe they don't want anything, they just want to keep it the way it is. That's fine, that's absolutely fine. That message needs to get before, and they need to make that case to the planning board. The planning board is going to decide, not just on the Brownfield remediation plan, will be a condition of an approval for a hotel. That's how it's going to work, so...
All right, so could I hear from the others on the board?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do they think the profit and losses, the gain and loss in this?
I'd like to address that, if I may. You know, I see this project in a fairly simple way. From what I've been told, from all the scientists, including the scientists who spoke earlier, Dr. Hughes, I think he would agree with this, that the site will be safer after it's remediated than it currently is. Well, you know, I believe what the scientists have told me. So the option is to leave it as it is, don't touch it as it's been thirty for thirty years, or make it a safer place. I think that's the benefit. I think that's the benefit. Whether it's going to be a hotel, whether it's going to be, whatever it's going to be, if it's going to be anything. But, you know, look, I understand your concerns, but I also have to take into consideration, at least in my own personal views, because this board, frankly, as the mayor said, legally can do very little, if anything. But, 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 but speaking my mind, I do believe science. I do take that into consideration. And if science is telling me, it's a toxic site now, and it'll be better after remediation, I have to take that as a truism, unless it's proven differently.
Well, until tonight, you're saying you heard it?
And no, and no, that's not true about tonight. If you would have read the remedial action work plan, it was in there before tonight, way before tonight. But anyway. Sir, I was not on this board eight years ago. I didn't rezone it then. But we're dealing with the zoning that we currently have.
Mr. Leo?
I think this project will be a benefit to Tukahoe. Currently, we have a site that's contaminated, and everything that the science tells us is that we're taking every precaution possible to actually make this a better site. Leaving it as is, I don't think is the right solution. It needs to be dealt with, not only this site, but also the north site, the north, you asked my opinion, I'm going to give my opinion, okay? So even the north site and the southern end of the site needs to be addressed. And as they said, you know, if it continues further down, they're going to continue to address those issues. So I think it's beneficial to Tukahoe that this gets addressed.
John Darnold?
So I'm trying to answer your question as best I can, what's gained and what's lost. That, again, and I think this is similar to your comments last month, that you touch upon many issues that date back to history, and, you know, you talk about land use, and what's the proper land use for a village, and those are all questions that require a lot of thought over time, and there have been, there has been a lot of thought over time. I think as Mayor Eklund alluded to, the decision to adopt the decision of the master plan was made years ago, and one of those uses was a hotel. So from my perspective, the way I'm looking at this, and I tried to mention this last month as well, is if there is the ability of this developer to build a hotel as of right, which is what the master plan allows for because of the zoning laws, which we have adopted, we've elected officials who've put the zoning laws in place, then it needs to be done in a way that protects the public. And so, again, there are three choices. There is, take action to make sure that nothing is ever built there, there is, to see what happens if this becomes a super fun site and needs to be completely excavated and brought down to bedrock, and then, you know, which to me sounds like it's a multi-million-dollar, multi-year task that probably would cause, all of the nightmares that you guys are having would probably be exponentially worse, because now you're talking about, you know, cubic yards after cubic tonnage of...
Well, are you aware that the Kensington Apartments in Bronxville, they took out forty thousand cubic yards of dirt and got it, forty thousand cubic yards. They did it, they seem to be satisfied, the dirt's, the toxic dirt's no longer there.
Yeah. Look, I'm not saying it's not, that, I think that site's a lot smaller than this one, and...
Thousands of tons.
Yeah, so I think it's, you know, I don't, I can't make any, I'm looking at this site right now. And then I guess the... And then I guess the, the third issue is, you know, can you do something that may make it better than it is? Take something away, cap it, because what's there is there. I'm still asking questions and I want to hear the public as to what's safe and what's not safe. And I think, you know, from my perspective, if I get the sense that, that what's going to happen here is something that's going to threaten, imminently threaten our public, then I would say that, and I'm not convinced of that yet. I'm waiting and I'm listening, you know, and I think we all are probably in that situation. Then I would say you look at the, you know, the solution that may result in a litigation. But, I'm listening and, you know, I think that's the risk of what could be lost.
Reesley?
I have to rely on the expertise of these state agencies that are here in this room. So, as I continue with my comments, if the people in this room are not going to listen and believe that what these gentlemen and this lady is saying is not factual, then whatever I say means nothing. I am not an expert in environmental issues. I think that's been made quite clear. I've answered a few letters of the community and that's what I start off by saying. These people tell me that this has to be done A, B, C, D, then yes, I have to go with that. I tried to really simplify this early on in the process for a meeting that we had a few months back, and it's come up several times tonight. Is it better to leave it alone or is it better to remediate it? These experts tell me it is better to remediate that site. So, they have my full support if that is the case. Mr. Laurie, please, I'm not finished. And you know what, Mr. Laurie? I wouldn't go around saying that you were part of dumping materials down in that site, okay? No, I don't want you to lie, but don't keep bringing it up all the time that you're part of the problem. Well, because he is part of the problem. Great, that's wonderful. Then maybe that might be one of the people that might be going after for financial retribution for what has to be done here. But I'm, listen. When Handle Field, when Handle Field, again, if you're not going to listen, then why am I going to answer your question? When Handle Field was being dumped on several years back, and I was on the board of the Tocco Youth Association, and all that soil was coming down onto Labriola Fields, and we had children that were coming down with cancers at that time. We called our DEC and we had that soil tested. And I had to live with their findings. Why? I have nothing else to back it up with. I don't have all those alphabets after my name. What is the loss to the village? It just sits there. And then those vapors will continue to seep out of the soil and the groundwater will continue to be contaminated.
Are you speaking as a scientist now?
No. Because obviously, this has been going on since the ground has been filled in. And now, hold on, at the 11th hour, and we wanna know, wow, how did we get to this point?
Exactly. Thank you.
And could you just, before I get to my question, though, clarify, because I haven't actually heard anyone up here say that remediation is better than doing nothing. So, would you agree with that statement?
Oh, most certainly.
On the record?
If we can get the stuff that's bad out of where it is and put it where it's gonna be safer, that's better for everybody.
The guy from the state, who are they? The guy from the government.
All right, wait a second. Well, if you give me a chance, all right. My name is Steve Karpinski. I work for the New York State Department of Health. I work with Renata on this site. And we work on, I don't know how many sites we work on throughout the state, hundreds of sites. You are not unique. I hate to tell you, but you're not in a unique situation. This is going on all over the state, all over the country for that matter. Site, built sites are gonna be developed and are gonna be developed under the scrutiny of the state, the DEC and the DOH. We're on top of what's going on. We have gone through these projects before. We understand where the potential problems are, where the potential exposures are going to occur, and we have procedures in place to make sure that doesn't happen. This is not unique. This is, goes on every single day in communities that are just as congested and just as surrounded by residences and schools, daycare centers. We deal with it all. It's a daily issue that we have to address. And we have to address it properly to make sure that people are not exposed. And again, we have a great deal of experience in doing this, in a lot of different situations, and we have a lot of methodologies that have been developed because of problems that have happened in the past that we've learned how to, how to address properly.
Does the state recommend remediation before the donation?
No, the state didn't recommend anything, but-
So, it was that bad? Why didn't the state come in?
Because we didn't know about it, I believe. It was not, we did not know that it was a-
I wrote letters for 42 years.
Well, all right, Joe, I understand. You're right, Joe, Joe, no, 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 Joe. Joe, the state was not aware of it. I don't know who you wrote your letters to, but I, well, I understand, but, all right, I-
All right, so, am I, can I ask my question now? So, my name is Kyla Murphy. I live at 303 Marble Dales, so literally just down the block. I have a four-year-old and a two-year-old, so have some very real reasons to be concerned about this project. That being said, I would like to understand what the plan is to give the public the results of the testing, any remediations necessary, any work stoppages necessary in real time.
Sure. Sure. Well, this is Renata Akarby. Previously, during the remedial investigation, the consultant provided me and the DEC project manager with a weekly summary of the daily air monitoring reports and all the data. My understanding is that there was a field health and safety officer that oversought the air monitoring equipment. We had several stations set up. They checked the data. They had four stations set up. It was an enhanced camp. They checked the data, they wrote a daily report, and that is emailed to myself and the DEC project manager.
How is it published to the public?
Well, this is something that we can recommend to the consultant, that after the reports are reviewed, that we can have copies of the camp weekly reports put in the data repository.
I mean, you can see the power of social media from the attendance here. There's no excuse in this day and age of not providing this information in real time.
Yeah, and we plan on, the village plans on, as soon as we get, as soon as we get the information, we're, you know, we have an excellent website, we have a channel, cable TV scroll. We're gonna make sure that any information, I know you're gonna say that we watch the scroll.
Not for nothing, there, I don't think that's how most people are communicating in these things.
Nobody watches the scroll. No, I get it, I get it. It's, we have a database of email addresses, so we may be able to go ahead and send out these email blasts, or we may set up a different email blast system of anybody who wants this information.
I think at the very least, you owe it to this community, to my children who you see on the street all the time, to provide that information either through email and social media.
Oh, we plan on it. We absolutely-
But in real time, it can't be two weeks late, because then it's too late. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Ellen Weininger. I'm Director of Educational Outreach at Grassroots Environmental Education. Just by way of introduction, Grassroots Environmental Education is a science-based environmental health nonprofit with offices here in Westchester and Long Island. And our primary mission is to educate the public about common environmental exposures and the links to human health impacts, based on independent peer-reviewed science. And we work closely with leading experts in the fields of environmental toxicology and medicine, and we serve local and state governments, school systems, healthcare professionals, and other organizations nationwide. I just wanna say, before I ask the question, a couple of questions, is that we do strongly recommend comprehensive, independent, and transparent health, safety, and risk assessments. And when we refer to the health assessments, we're referring to a full comprehensive health impact assessment, which is a formal procedure that is done in land decisions and should be, should be implemented before any decisions are made on this project. And it should include all the rigorous testing and all the monitoring of hazardous materials, pharmaceuticals. Haven't heard any discussion here yet about radioactive contaminants. And that's an issue because we know that there are radioactive contaminants that have a very, very long half-life, thousands and thousands of years. And radioactive, radioactive materials do not dissipate, they just continue to spread. They migrate and they spread and they continue to decay. And I haven't heard any discussion about that, so that's one of my questions. Certainly, soil, the drums, barrels, tanks at the site, and groundwater and air quality analysis and monitoring in surrounding communities, not just limited to this location of this hazardous waste site. And I do wanna say that this is really the moment that demands stepping back and taking a thorough amount of time and executing absolute due diligence at this juncture. This is the moment, right here and right now, that everyone will look back on and say, we had the opportunity and should have been more careful before, and I emphasize, before the approvals were issued, to disturb and build on this hazardous waste site. Once the site is developed and serious air quality issues emerge and water quality issues emerge and disturbing cancer cases arise and other health issues arise, clearly, it will be too late. But we will all remember this moment and what is demanded and required of our public officials and agencies. Now, I am struck this evening by the number of, not only the people here in attendance from the public, but the many children that have been here, and many of them obviously have gone home. Children, we know, this is a fact, an undisputable fact. Children are our most vulnerable, most uniquely vulnerable population. They take in contaminants, more contaminants, pound for pound than adults do. Their organ systems are immature and therefore they can't detoxify in the same fashion that adults might be able to do. They have typical hand-to-mouth behaviors. They play close to the ground. And they are not decision-makers. Children depend on adults to protect them. And so, one of the issues is, with all of these potential vapors and substances and volatilizing chemicals and all of these other issues, what is the cumulative impact of multiple exposures on a child? Is anyone talking about that? What I also want to know is what is the safe level of exposure? And who is that safe for? An adult male of 165 pounds? What about pregnant women and fetuses? I don't hear any discussion. I haven't heard anything mentioned about pregnant women and children. What I also have not heard mentioned, although there is a health and safety plan, and it sounds like will be implemented, I have heard of no such plan for children in the school. Now, we know already, it's also a fact, that children in school have no enforcement agency. There is no OSHA. There is no, no one to call in when something happens at school. The staff, the faculty, the employees, public employee, safety and health are protected. But God forbid, something happens, there's no enforcement agency to call in and protect the children in this community, at the Waverly School or in any other building. We also know that accidents happen. That's why they're accidents. So, there's human error, there's spillage, there's, there are truck accidents. I mean, there's an enormous number of items on this list. One of the things I'm also curious about is extreme weather events. And we have seen tremendous, tremendous extreme rainstorms and flooding. What will happen? And who will protect these communities? With all of the efforts that are being talked about as far as protection, clearly, there aren't any guarantees. So, I would really love the answer about radioactive contaminants. I'd love an answer about the health and safety plan for the Waverly School children and any other buildings nearby with children. And I'd like to know how extreme climate events, flooding, and other high winds will play out here. We've seen that play out in other communities where there's hazardous industrial activity going on and rampant, rampant contamination and flooding. So, anyone who can answer those questions, please?
Thank you. I'm gonna ask, do you see, are you able to answer some of these questions? And I'm actually gonna ask the next speaker, maybe Dr. Moran, who is our superintendent of schools, if you wanted to kinda, I know he's here tonight, if you wanted to maybe speak next, school, okay.
The radiation one is easy to answer because we're going to screen for radioactivity when we do this, what I spoke about earlier, the pre-characterization soil borings on the site will be screening for radioactivity.
And when you screen, what kinds of testing is done? Is it done on-site? Is it brought to the lab at where you can get in-growth curves and really look at the radioactive material and the decay products? Is that what hap, or is it just some alarms that are triggering and screening?
It's, it's going to be screened in the field with real-time instruments. I'm not a radiation expert. We have those in our agency, but we are committed to screening for radioactivity as they pull up their samples.
Well, I, I would request that extensive documentation be provided to the officials and to the public, and transparency in real time is imperative.
I keep hearing about transparency, this and that, but, please, one thing that you, everybody here needs to understand is this. We, DEC and DOH, we work for you. We have no relationship whatsoever with the developer. As a matter of fact, we don't even care whether you'll tell us to build there or not. What we are charged with is to ensure that whatever they do there is protective of human health and the environment. So, we are on your side. So, we don't, we don't hide any data whatsoever. So, what about that? I mean, if you call Kevin or DOH and say, you need to see someone, so that, and we have you available, we're sending to you instantly.
There's no assertion here of any, any impropriety. The question is that it's not a matter of me calling you and asking you for information, which generally, I know, must be done through a freedom of information law request. That's a separate issue. But in terms of public notification, a registry or a public notification mechanism, so that it's not just me communicating with you, but the entire community is continually in the loop at all times.
I get you. That's why we have record repositories. Any documents that we have that is approved by DEC is placed in those public- Any documents that we have that is approved by D.C. is placed in those public domain. You have access to it. You don't even need to file Freedom of Information. Whatever information we have is available to you. We don't hide anything.
As I said, notification is essential.
That's why we have packages.
And documents should not have to be foiled. They should be presented to the town, to the village, and available, and open documents.
That's what I just told you. We don't hide any--
I'm not saying you do. I'm saying the documents need to be available in an--
It's available. It's available.
Right. But if I request it of you, but I'm talking about everyone here is not going to be calling and requesting, that would not be an efficient matter.
All you have to do is go to the record repositories. We have, I think we have one at the library, then we have one with the village, too. Anyway, I think we have at least two separate locations where you can go, make an appointment. Or you don't even have to make an appointment. Go there, and all the reports that have been generated at this site is available to anybody as we speak.
That's not--
That's why we are here. That's why we're here, answering your question. That's why I said we work for you. I mean, we don't expect you to have the kind of background that we have. That's why they still have people like me and him and her to review those documents and speak on your behalf. No, no, that's not true. Hold up, please. What you said was that we have a robust public participation program. What we do is, we receive proposal from the developer. We are required, based on our rules or laws, to put up documents out for public review while we at the same time review the documents as well. We didn't come up with our record of decision before we did that, because we want to hear from the public as we review the document as well. It just happened that, I mean, we are glad to have people like you participating in this process. And we took into account what you have to offer, plus viewed, I mean, with our scientific background, I came up with what we think would be most protective for this particular site.
Thank you. I still have those other questions I hope can be answered about children's vulnerability.
Right. Your first question regarding a health and safety plan at the Waverly School. The consultant has put together a very comprehensive health and safety plan for the site workers. In that health and safety plan, there's a very stringent air monitoring portion. In addition to this, as Kevin and the mayor have also provided information, there is a community air monitoring plan to make sure that the surrounding communities and the adjacent buildings are protected from any migration of off-site contaminants. So, there are two monitoring plans in place and will be in place during any remedial activities.
But that still doesn't provide protective measures for children at school should something occur? See, this is where, to prevent, to prevent, but what happens when the monitoring level exceeds some threshold that you have determined? Then what happens? And how are children protected in that school? They are in that school. They are in very close proximity. They are not protected.
I under-- oops, sorry. I understand your concern. The community air monitoring program has certain action levels. Now, these action levels indicate that we need to use a screening tool to make sure that site-related contaminants don't leave the site. These action levels are quite low, and they're implemented in real-time. I'm sure Kevin and I will be getting phone calls from the consultant saying, "Hey, this is what's going on." The intent of the camp is to prevent anything from leaving the site. And there are commercial buildings. There's a karate studio. There are other commercial buildings that are adjacent to the site. So, we're taking the entire community under protection.
Right. But I still do not hear of any emergency plan for the children, evacuation, or any protective apparatus for them in the event that there is a release that exceeds whatever that threshold is? Because you're dealing with a hazardous waste site, and you just, these are protective measures that are in place for the workers should be in place for children in school.
I don't disagree with that. At the moment, we don't have an emergency plan because we feel that these measures, the community air monitoring plan and the onsite health and safety plan are protective. Steve, jump in here.
Yeah.
Here's what we do, okay? Just like she said earlier, we have threshold, okay, for this camp, community air monitoring plan. So, which means if there is a first threshold, say for example, we say, okay, if the level of dust in the air or photo organic compound reaches, say for example, two parts per million, yes, what we do? The first thing we do, okay, is, okay, if that happens, then, because we have a D.C. inspector on-site during this time, he will go to, I mean, because the monitors will show what level it is. Then there's an action based on that level. The first action would be, okay, what do we do right now to ensure that this level doesn't go beyond that point? It could be, you probably need to put water on the ground--
That's not what I'm asking. So, I think we're not moving along here on this question. I'm asking for an emergency plan, a health and safety--
If you let me finish, if you let me finish, because the idea here is, the idea for the camp is to ensure that that doesn't happen. That's why we have different levels. I mean, the first thing that will happen if there's going to be an emergency is to ensure that the job is stopped right away. Stop and ensure that whatever is living inside doesn't happen. So, we have a way to address that. I mean, that would be part of the plan. If you be, if you'll be patient and allow that camp to be developed, all those thresholds will be ironed out. I mean, we'll be laid out in that plan.
Okay. And the extreme weather events? Any response to that?
Sure. There's going to be a stormwater pollution prevention plan, control plan implemented, and that's typically how we manage. It takes into account, you know, significant rainstorms.
And extreme flooding.
We can take a look and make sure that that's managed. It's acknowledging your point there, and we'll take a look at that and make sure it's adequate.
Okay. We, as you know, we have hundred-year floods that are happening far more frequently than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
Larry Saviano, One Coolidge Street. By definition, a Brownsville, is that a less extensive remediation than a Superfund?
No. We can have Brownsville sites that are as contaminated as sites that are managed under the state--
Who determines a site, whether it be Superfund or Brownsville?
The--
What agency determines that?
D.C.
Okay.
My agency.
Okay. What I find very odd is that, let's call this the building, right here, and we call this the Brownsville, correct?
Okay.
That's the Brownsville. Now, to the right or the south, or whichever way you're facing, it's a Superfund, correct?
Not yet. It's a potential--
Not yet. Not yet, but close to being, correct?
It could become a state Superfund site.
Okay. How come you don't know that?
So, just to back up, it's not dependent on the level of contamination necessarily. The site to the south could be a Brownsville site.
It's the worst, because this was a toxic dump. Unlike Bronxville, which was really petrochemical, and I could understand the need of a Brownsville there, we're talking about hazardous, a variety of hazardous materials that are buried there. Now, as I said before, to the right and to the left could be a Superfund. I say it is, because I'm a layman. But I look at it this way. Let's look at it not as a landfill. Let's look at it like a body of water. How can you make a determination that this is a Brownsville, which is a less extensive cleanup at times, and the rest of it in that pool of water is the Superfund? If anything, that whole site would be constituted as a Superfund. You see, what I find ironic, that the county has already given them $30 million in tax benefits to kill us. Nice. Over 30 years, we get to die slowly. And he gets the break of the tax break. But yet, when he's up in Bedford, he's not breathing that air. Those stacks that come up out of that hotel are going to be at eye level to my house, about 150 feet to 200 feet away. Okay? He's not breathing that air. Now, if there was a way that I could pipe that pipe right up to Bedford or down to the east side, I would do it. But I can't. You see, and that's why I look at this as a dog and pony show. That's what it is. You see? And that's why we are all here. Initially, when this whole thing got going, we never thought it would get to this point. But now, we see what's happening, and we don't like what's happening. No offense to you. I know you represent the D.C., Health Department, all experts, but as far as I'm concerned, that's not a Brownsville site. That's a Superfund site. You can't call Superfund here, Brownsville here, when you're talking about the same body of water. And I'm going to keep it short, and that's all I have to say.
My name is Thomas Messina. I live at Forest Break Road in Eastchester. I have a daughter who is attending Waverly. She'll be attending next year as well. You know, I've been thinking about, and I'll try to be brief here, I've been thinking about, you know, things that would sort of allay the concerns of the public, that, you know, safety concerns, and thinking about ways for our public officials and our experts to demonstrate that they really are concerned about safety. So, I'm going to bring in an analogy. The ancient Romans, we're all familiar with them, you know, the fundament of our Western civilization is based upon them. They had a principle for large constructions, that, for example, if a bridge was being developed, the engineer would sleep under the bridge. And when the bridge was completed, they would continue to sleep under the bridge for some time. And it's a very important principle because it aligns, you know, the interests of the engineers with the interests of the public, right? So, the interests are function and safety. So, my question to the group here is, if the experts say this is safe, which one of our public officials or experts are willing to camp out on the part of undeveloped land to give us-- to align our risks? And to our experts here, I've got a question for you. I'm going to hold you that, too. I've got a question for you. You know, I'm not a PhD. I don't have all sorts of acronyms after my name. But if you have a, you can't give us 100% certainty that all of these, you know, remediations that you do come out successfully. Most of them do, probably. But, you know, we know that we've got issues in Flint, 9/11. We've all read it on the news or experienced ourselves or know people have suffered. So, my question to the experts are, you know, if you had a plane that had a 1% failure rate, such that 99 of 100 flights would arrive safely, but one wouldn't, would you take that flight? And you wouldn't. You wouldn't take that flight. So, why are you putting our children on that plane? So, I'm going to end with this. When it comes to ruin, ruin, we're talking about possibility of poisoning our children. When it comes to ruin, it's precaution. Don't do it. And if you're going to do it, get on the plane with us. Thank you.
My name is Jared Sheldon. I came here with Dr. Hughes from Syracuse, and I've been studying the soil and soil vapor data with him all summer. And from what you've said so far, all of the soil points that you're taking 15 feet deep, you're only analyzing maybe two feet of it. You're barely touching any of it. And where your soil vapors are that you're not going to continue to monitor, that's what people are breathing in, and that's what the health risks are. But you're not going to keep monitoring it. And right now, New York State does not have standards for a lot of the chemicals that we found toxic through the U.S. EPA website, and some of the toxicities exceed 50 times that what's acceptable.
Should I, can I jump in and address one of the points there? And I'm glad that you brought that up, because it's a very important component of the remedy and of all of the remedies that we do, is that we don't stop monitoring. First of all, the emissions will be treated, and there will be a site management plan which requires ongoing monitoring for the site for as long as it's needed. So, I'd like to make it clear that we don't stop monitoring. We haven't stopped monitoring the soil vapor intrusion. We're planning to go back out and continue to look at other buildings that could be impacted. So, we absolutely continue to monitor long into the future, as long as it's needed on these sites.
Okay. During it, you're monitoring it. But right now, there are huge gaps where you're not monitoring anything at all, because there's no monitoring spots for it, and you're adding all of the points for the soils to try and increase where you're monitoring, but you're not adding stuff for the vapors. You're not doing the same level of it.
I can address that. And actually, it speaks to an earlier point, that right now, you know, the site was listed because of a significant threat due to the vapors. And as part of the remedy, there will be an active remediation system to control those vapors. In order to design that active system, we have to pilot test it to get the design parameters, and that is part of the work plan. So, there will be a pilot test to design that. So, we're not ignoring the vapors.
Okay. And as you said earlier, where you're removing the soil is based off of the soil data where it's too high, right?
It's based off of the remedial investigation data, yes. So, based on that, it's areas that we think need to have more data and possibly be excavated.
But that's in the soil, correct?
In the soil.
During the studies, we found that the soil vapors and the soil data don't correspond all the time. You're hitting some of the spot, but you're missing a lot of them where there are high soil vapor concentrations and no soil data, and that soil is not being looked at right now.
Right. But we're, we know we found those high concentrations of soil vapor, and our approach is to actively collect those vapors. So, with that technology, you don't have to be right on top of the source. It will have a radius of influence. And the way we know that it will capture that is that there will be monitoring points at the extremities of the influence of that system, and we'll be able to measure negative pressure there. So, we'll be assured of capturing the vapors.
But how do you know where it is? If in the soil data, you're only analyzing a small part, and out of all the soil borings you've taken, there are probably 20 or so that haven't even been looked at at all. You took them, and then you didn't even look at them. They haven't been analyzed, and there's no information on them that you produced for the public.
For any of the soil that we analyzed, we certainly looked at the results. I'm not sure what you mean by that. As far as the soil vapor, when we do this pilot test and we put in performance in as part of an adequate system design, we put in what's called performance monitoring points where into the future, we'll be able to monitor the soil vapor at the site.
Okay. But the data that you released with all your other ones only showed X amount being analyzed, and there were huge gaps that it said, "Oh, this has an odor to it," but you didn't actually test to see what was in it.
I don't know the specific points, but typically, when you pull up a core of soil, you identify the worst soil in that core, and that's the one that you often send to laboratory. You don't send every bit of soil to the laboratory. So, it's actually conservative. We're taking the worst and analyzing it. Hopefully, that's, I mean, that's what we try to do.
But there were some borings that you didn't do that for at all. You did not analyze at least 20 different borings of the points that you're talking about. So, you looked at it, you found the worst, and then you didn't analyze it.
I can't speak to that. But if you can provide the specific data, we'll try to address that question.
Okay.
Thank you for the-- address that question. Thank you for the...
My name is John Rabia, 62 Chestnut Street. I spoke here last month, and I questioned the board on, I'm sorry. I questioned the board on, if anything, the approach that you're taking to the development of this site. And you talked about tonight, appreciating the crowd coming here and voicing their opinions. The crowd is here because of people in this room who let everyone know what's going on. The board told no one anything. You made references to email blasts before during construction that you would let people know if something happened. You have let no one know anything. I had to personally blanket half of Tuckahoe myself with flyers in everyone's door, myself, my two children, and my wife. I'm walking up to people with a flyer. No one knows anything about this. They thought I wanted to clean their gutters. And I had to tell them, no, this is about the project on Marbledale Road, and no one knew anything about it. Most people that live here know nothing about the toxins that are in there, and the people that have been here for a while do. And no one knows what's going to happen when we start digging here. And it really concerns me, again, this month, that the people are here because of most of, some of the people in this room, spreading the word. And you make reference that you're concerned. But again, I posed this question to you that my 11-year-old stepdaughter asked me, why isn't the mayor protecting us if it's his job to protect us? This was being fast-tracked. And the only reason it's not, there aren't shovels in the ground right now, is because we are here. The whole program has been changed because we are here, and we're making our voices heard. We have a new rep from the D E C, and you made a statement earlier that you're not aware, or you don't know, if this actually qualifies as a superfund site. Sir, it does. In the April meeting, they stated it. The D E C reps that were here in April, they stated it, that if the developer were to pull out, the project would be remediated under the superfund site program, and that the government, and that the federal government would step in. So wait a minute, wait, wait. You said, I don't know. And this is one of the problems that I have with all of this. Everyone is using semantics in their words. This is a superfund site. And again, in reference to Bronxville. That was petroleum. And you, again, the board states that it's private owned. We have no say. Bronxville dictated how that site was remediated. The Bronxville Board, yes, they did. They did. They told the developer how that site was going to be done, how it was going to be remediated. And they told them, get all the soil out. Now, that's a brownfield. And your expert who's not here this month, when we discussed brownfield versus superfund, he referred to brownfield as a warm and fuzzy statement or term. And it is, that is warm and fuzzy. But this, this site is a superfund site. It's not a little dirty. It's very dirty. And everyone here has to be concerned with what happens when they start working on this site. And when it's done, what's going to be coming out of these vents? And who's going to make sure that these vents are monitored properly or filtered? And I find it hard to believe that the guy that works at the Marriott, who makes the least amount of money, is going to take care of that for us.
You raised that question last month, and it's a very valid question. So I want the D E C to explain it because there is a, there's a solid answer to that question. So I know the question came up about if there's venting, and I know we talked to Mr. Bill also about this, if there's going to be vents, if there's going to be a system in place where this site has to be monitored forever, who's going to do it? It's not, we know it's not a Marriott employee. We know that there's going to be a responsible party. And how do we, how do we feel comfortable that that process will take place for the next 100 years? What, how does this happen in this type of project? You guys have been doing this for a long time.
There's an environmental easement on the property that runs with the property now forever, if this were to go forward. And that easement requires compliance with a site management plan, and that's where you find the details of the monitoring. And it's would be the volunteer, the applicant, who would be responsible.
Meaning the property owner?
Yeah.
So he would then be responsible to hire a company or an entity to go ahead and monitor this, as long as he owns that property. He sells it, the next guy's going to do that.
Yeah. And they have to report that to D E C on a regular basis. And then someone like myself, if I'm still the project manager, would be looking at that information.
Now, that reporting that's done, is it have to be done by a firm that's certified by the state? I mean, could he hire anybody to do this?
It has to be done by a qualified environmental professional. And depending on the nature of the system, that may have to be a professional engineer.
Okay. All right. Now, because that was a valid question you asked last month.
Okay. During the construction process, you talk about foam and water to contain dust and vapors. Are they going to be there on Saturdays and Sundays with the foam and the vapors and the hose?
Yeah. I think what was explained earlier was that when there's nobody there, there won't be exposed soil that could blow around.
No? Okay. This building is going to be put on pilings, correct? Okay. How many pilings would you estimate are going to be put into the ground for a building this size? I haven't seen the plans.
I think that might be in the work plan. There is a foundation plan. Yeah. If you look in the remedial action work plan, there is a drawing that shows the pilings.
Is it 100 to 200?
It's a lot.
It's a lot. Okay. That's my concern. So on Saturday and Sunday, when you have 100 pilings in the ground that are running to bedrock, that quarry goes, varies, it goes down from to about 180 to 200 feet deep. Those pilings are going to be like a nail in a tire, and air rushes out the sides of it. It doesn't rush through the nail. You're going to have 100 of them on Saturday and Sunday, venting the vapors that have already been coming out. You're accelerating it now with those pilings, correct? They're going to act as conduits and bring everything up even faster than they are now.
I don't know that.
You don't know that? How can you dispute that?
I'm a structural engineer. I know that. That's true.
Okay. So now, it's going to accelerate the release of the vapors that have already poisoned people. I intended to bring a rudimentary cancer cluster chart that was made 10 years ago and presented to the board. I really wish I did have it because I think all the people that were here today would be appalled to see it. I'll have it next month. I promise you that. I promise you that.
One thing to keep in mind is that this site doesn't have any sort of a cap or cover today.
And as you excavate it, what little, what soil you remove that is acting as a cap now will also accelerate the process.
But it's not a cap. It's a, there's a soil cover, and that's permeable. So this remedy is going to reduce that permeability and contain the vapors.
So if you remove 10 to 15 feet of the soil, you're removing what effectively is a cap at this time. So you will, again, accelerate the release of the vapors.
But again, it's not a, it's not an airtight cap. It's permeable. It's just soil.
Or is it just art where they're developing?
It's the entire brownfield property.
It's not brownfield. Again, it's a warm and fuzzy phrase, but it's a superfund site. It's very dirty. And based on the preliminary testing that's been done by someone that was hired by the property owner, that's the other thing that everyone needs to understand. There's been testing that's been done, and as the student that just spoke earlier said, you only tested, they only tested parts of it. Because if you took something out and it looked and smelled really bad, they threw it away. Yes, that's exactly how it worked. I heard all about this.
Well, I mean, this, these, this is how these projects go. And I want to clarify that, you know, there's this, there may be a misunderstanding even about the term superfund in New York, a state mechanism that allows us to spend, sorry, state money to clean up a site if there's no responsible party or nobody volunteering to clean up the site or remediate the site. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's worse or less bad. We have brownfield sites that are equally as bad as superfund sites.
I understand that. And that's the problem with this process, I find, that a brownfield site is kind of dirty. When it surpasses that, like this one did from preliminary testing, it's very dirty. And you have levels of contaminants that are many thousand times higher than acceptable, acceptable levels. So that is why it's, again, the D E C rep that was here earlier, and the village's representative that's not here tonight, he stated, yes, it does qualify as a superfund. So it's very dirty. It is emitting a lot of toxins that has made people sick for years and years. We have respiratory issues. We have cancers. We have, I'm speaking, we have cancers, okay? We have reproductive issues. We have developmental issues. And you're going to dig this up, blocks from a school, two schools, actually, and a park. And it's also bookended by a park on either end of the block where children play basketball all day and night. Little children run up and down the slide. And this is all going to come out.
What, can I answer a specific question?
Yes, please.
What is the specific question that you're asking?
I asked you one before. You didn't really answer it.
What, can you restate it?
Well, I asked you if the pilings were going to accelerate the release of the vapors, and you said, I don't know.
Right. I don't have, I don't know.
Could you possibly say that?
What we've said is that we believe that those pilings could, if they disturb something down in the landfill, that's why we put in the monitoring for the groundwater. That's our mechanism for measuring if they're disturbing something, if they're causing the problem to become worse.
What about the air?
That's, there's going to be active vapor control, active collection of the...
So when those pilings are in the ground, and they're going to spray foam and water, correct? All day and night, Saturdays and Sundays, to contain this during construction?
As part of the health and safety plan, there's a comprehensive air monitoring plan. So if they're, and I'm not an engineer, so forgive me if I'm getting my terms wrong, but if they're sinking these pilings down, they're going to be doing active air monitoring right there. So if vapor controls are necessary, foam or other active systems will be applied. As to what happens when site activities are not being conducted, we will take your concern and we'll discuss it. We may put in some additional contingency, some additional monitoring on the weekend. This is something to be discussed. But we have no data, and we have to wait for the data to be generated.
And that's the problem. You have no data. And if it wasn't for all these people filling this room, shovels would have been in the ground already. And that's the big concern, that everyone wants to fast-track this. Again, this guy lives in Bedford, and he's going to make a lot of money off of this. And we're all going to suffer. This has made people sick for years. And I plead, I am pleading with the board. We've been pleading to do more testing, and it took all of this, that you didn't take it upon yourself to do it. That's the concerning part here.
Did he not do his job?
No. I don't believe so. All right. I'm done. Joe wants to talk. He's getting tired.
Good evening. My name is Joseph R. Marinello, Jr. I live at 4 Coolidge Street in Tuckahoe, New York. My home is actually overlooking this quarry and will be overlooking this hotel. Kevin, I have a very important question for you, but I'll hold off for a while because I'd like to talk to the mayor and the board of trustees. Tom, you lit a little light in my heart listening to you tonight, okay? I had a lot of doubts about you, but you said a few things tonight that lit a heart, a little light in my heart. And I wish my wife was here today because she was as healthy as you would ever want to meet, a beautiful woman. She was born in Harlem, and I brought her to my beautiful village of Tuckahoe, which she fell in love with and then became desperately ill. How much did that quarry contribute to her immune system? I don't know. But this is what I want to tell you, Mayor, and I mean this. I don't hate you. I said that at the last meeting. Then you made a remark after we all left, when just you and the trustees were there, and you took a little backhand slap because three of my neighbors said it was a done deal. And you said, oh, how did they ever say it's a done deal? Well, I'm telling them it's a done deal. And if you don't believe it, if you don't believe what I'm saying now, tell me I'm wrong. It's a done deal. Do you think, do you think the chairman of your planning board, Anna Maria, is going to vote against this project? Do you think Ray Neuberg is going to vote against this project? And the man you just appointed, who's still working on a house on Fisher Avenue for three years? You think he's going to vote against this project? Do you think Claire Gorman is going to vote against this project? She voted for the hotel when you voted for it. So, so Steve, don't insult the Village of Tuckahoe residents' intelligence. Don't make us think we're all stupid. It is a done deal, Steve, whether you want to believe it or not. Now, these people came down here, and I can guarantee you, it's a done deal, just listening to them. It's a done deal. But we're going to undo it. We're going to undo it, Steve. And I'll tell you why. I want to go back to the first meeting in July of two years ago, when the chairman, who was sitting in your seat, Ron Gallo, who you removed as chairman, thank God. But I was the only resident of this village who came to that meeting. And he went into that, you know, that poetry stage that he normally goes in, and he wanted to know why Mr. Weinberg, the developer of this project, wants to build a five-story hotel. And then he went on and on. And then Mr. Weinberg got up and said, no, I didn't want to build a five-story hotel. I wanted to build just the smaller, smaller units on some of those pieces of property. But he said, the mayor, John Fitzpatrick said, oh, no, 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 no. We want a hotel. Now, I'm going to ask you a question, Mayor, because I know you're an honest man. And I know you are. But this question is right to you. When you were sitting with that board, okay, Claire Gorman, you, John Fitzpatrick, and then you had Luigi Macorci, and then you had Ms. Coleman, who was the wife of the previous pastor of the Shiloh Baptist Church. Am I right, Steve?
Frankie Coleman, yep.
Okay. And then you decided to go ahead and change the zoning, and you took the buffer zone that we had. I had 150-foot buffer zone. Now, you gave me 25 feet because you needed the space to build. That's why you did it. Let me ask you a question. At the time you guys voted to make these changes, and this was all by the recommendations, by the way, of Frank Fish, who's not here tonight. I wish he was, who you should really get rid of. He ruined this beautiful, small village by all his construction, all his building, and all his ideas. But in any event, I want to ask you a question, Steve. At that meeting, when you all decided you wanted a hotel, did you see the rendering of the hotel that Mr. Fitzpatrick had?
No. No. Actually, let me...
Actually, let me, let me give a little more detailed explanation.
I was just gonna ask you to please clarify that.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
First of all, how the process worked. It wasn't a hotel, it was a zoning change. So there was other things other than a hotel. What we have to do, we're required to do, is occasionally, the village has to have the master plan updated. So we had a master plan revision committee. It was chaired by, co-chaired by Mel Bacaliano. She currently sits on our planning board. I wanna say Anne Marie, was Anne Marie the, I just don't remember who was.
Lynn Carapola was also on that board.
There was, there was a whole team, but anyway.
I have a copy.
Okay, got it. No, we have a copy here at the clerk's office, too. So in that, in the recommendations that they made, and they made recommendations to rezone Section of Marbledale Road, there was also a recommendation to rezone areas in Crestwood. And there might've been some other language changes as to what should be done. A master plan, for people who don't realize, is sort of a blueprint, a roadmap for what a municipality should be doing over the next 10 years. So when that zoning category was recommended by that master plan committee, it had a hotel as a permitted use in that zoning category. We, I voted in, I think it was probably a 5-0 vote on that. I don't remember, I shouldn't say that.
5-4 vote.
5-4? No, 5.
Yeah. Luigi Macorci voted against the hotel.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I don't remember. So at the time, when we were voting on that master plan recommendation, we weren't, well, I'm gonna speak for myself. I certainly wasn't looking at whether or not, you know, I wasn't pinpointing a hotel as anything specific that may or may not come up down the road. It was a permitted use, of course, along with a lot of other permitted uses. However, since it was a recommendation from the master plan committee, as well as, as you rightfully said, Frank Fish, who works with the master plan committee, you pay about 40 grand to get that study done. I was comfortable with voting in favor of it. Now, was there a particular blueprint for a hotel at that time? Definitely not, not that I ever saw. I know you've made the claim that your former mayor, I heard that, I get that.
Don't ever say it was a claim. Because I don't claim. I seen it.
Okay.
It was given to me. Matter of fact, I was told by your board at the time, with the mayor, he said that you could look at it, but it had to stay here in the village hall, okay? And it couldn't be spoken about to the general public. I seen the rendering. And it was Starwood Corporation that were the people that were gonna build there. But then Starwood came in and did their own study and found out it was so contaminated, they ran away from the project.
I wanna address something you said.
Go ahead.
In the beginning.
Go ahead.
And, look, we're all friends, we've known each other a long time, so. You said that this is a done deal. You said that many times. And I just wanna reiterate what I said two and a half hours ago. This application goes before the planning board for a decision. I absolutely believe, and I think nobody should, should put their head in the sand on this point, which is, the planning board, if they approve this project, I absolutely expect somebody in this room or a team from this organized group, which I have no issues with this, they're gonna file an Article 78 lawsuit. I, see, it happened on one, why wouldn't it happen here when it's happened on other sites that were less controversial than this? So let me, let me just finish out. So that lawsuit then places the decision of this development in, it places it at the desk of a judge, not the planning board, not the mayor, the village board, which it's never been before us, anyway. That's gonna be the determinant, the individual who's gonna make a determination. Let's say that the planning board decides they're gonna go ahead and deny the application for whatever, and you may say, "There's no way they would do that." But let's say they do, let's, they're watching this movie, they're tired of people, you know, yelling at them as they, these are volunteers, live in our community.
Right.
And, you know, they're taking a lot of heat. You know, I've said many years, I think it's much harder to be on the planning and zoning board than it is to be on the village board. I was on the zoning board, as you know, years ago. So let's say that the planning board denies the application. The very next morning, at 10 o'clock in the morning, I'm sure the developer is gonna file that same.
Let him do it.
And, and, and I'm, look, I'm fine with that.
Let him file.
Look, I have made it pretty clear, people haven't realized, that I think that this developer has done an awful job of getting the message out of all these issues that have been coming up, certainly for the last year. He's had this application in village hall for two years. I have not once heard him, or his team is here now, thank you very much, I have asked the Albany folks to come on down here, I asked them to come on down here and speak because I'm not the scientist in this, nor is my board members or my village administration staff here the scientists who can answer all these questions. So where has the developer been for the last two years explaining throughout this whole process, answering some of the questions that the public has come up with? He has been nowhere. And that's been my bone to pick with.
I appreciate everything you said to me, but I want you to know, I want you to know as mayor, the mayor of our beautiful little village, you had a trustee who came up before you not too long ago, his name was Mike Leachio, and he was arguing some points with you and the board about what happened to this quaint, small village. And I agreed with him. That's what we want, that quaint, small village. We don't need Brooklyn. We don't need the Bronx. But I'm gonna tell you, Steve, I did a lot of research, I did a lot of talking to a lot of people. You, as I said at the last meeting, and the four trustees, could vote by not having this project, period. Period. The state will then come in, and Kevin, it was true what that gentleman said before me, both George and my good friend here, here, here he is, Randy, they both said that if the village denies this project, or if the developer walked away from this project, okay?
Joe, I need to stop you right there for a second because you are actually making a claim that I know for sure is wrong. And there's no offense here, but we're gonna ask the village attorney to answer that specific question. And the question is, their statement that you just made is that the mayor and the board of trustees can vote now at a special meeting to stop this project. Let's just throw that question.
But wait a minute, before you act, I wanna hear what the attorney has to say. But let me ask you a question.
We've asked ourselves that question.
On the grounds of the health and welfare of the children and residents of this village, you have a right to deny this project.
Okay, stop right there, let's ask.
Joe, just to clarify one thing before, it was a 5-0 vote in 2009, in 2009, to pass that local law.
Right.
Changing the zoning. So basically, what happens is. I am? No, can't hear me?
Yeah, bring it closer, Gary.
Okay. So what's happened is, I'll take a step back. And as we were talking, 2009 zoning was changed, said specifically, you know, that area, there can be a hotel there, okay? This applicant comes in, makes an application, goes through the brownfield program. They've gone through, they've gotten three variances. There was a height variance, I think it was under 10 feet. There was a side yard variance, a small, small side yard variance, and also a rear yard variance.
It's funny, the other day, you said it was only a four-foot.
What I'm saying is under 10 feet. It was probably more like four feet.
It's 10 feet.
No, I don't think it was, Joe, I think it was more like four.
He went from 50 feet to 60.
No, I don't, I don't think that's.
You got his architect here, ask him.
That's not his architect.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So right now, it's, so there's a process that this applicant has to go through. They have to go through the zoning board, which they did. They've gotten their three variances. Now they're before the planning board. The planning board, what happens is, the planning board is in charge of SECA, the SECA regulations pursuant to New York State, and part of that is this brownfield issue. And what the planning board has done is, they did a conditional net deck. We always hear the conditional net deck, everyone's talking about the conditional net deck. Conditional net deck said that the hotel was not gonna have a adverse environmental impact but for the brownfield issues. And what the planning board did was took the brownfield issues and put it in these gentlemen and ladies' hands. They said DEC, DOH is gonna be in charge of that. And if they sign off on that, then that condition will be met. They've issued a decision document basically saying approving this remedial action work plan. So that's where we are now. We've heard from the public before, referendum, throw a referendum in there. Referendums don't apply to this project. We heard.
I usually worry moratorium.
Moratorium, correct. Moratorium is really used for long-term planning. Let's put a stop, call timeout, let's think about this long-term planning. Now, the issue with the moratorium in this project is that you have, in 2008, the master plan saying, this location, this Marbledale corridor, needs to have this development. And in 2009, the board at that time approved the zoning changes specifically to allow a hotel there. To go back and try to read or argue that now, put a moratorium in to stop this after we've just been through this a number of, only a few years ago, is problematic, and it will be subject to challenge. The developer will challenge it, and it's gonna be really a tough argument, if not impossible, to say, "Wait a second here, there was a long-term planning goal here." So it doesn't work. So the board can, if they thought, if the board said, "You know what? These teams here, we don't agree with what they're doing, and our, we have, we have our HDR here, our representative saying, hey, wait a second, these guys are way off base." Yeah, we could probably bring litigation to stop this. But what happens is, we have our environmental consultant, we have the DEC and the DOH, and they've both said a number of times that they're here for us, they're here to protect us. They're the scientists. So going to litigation, convincing a judge that our engineer, our guy that we hired, doesn't know what they're doing, these folks don't know what they're doing, but the judge is gonna say, "Okay, no one knows what they're doing here, yeah, the project should stop." It's gonna be a tough argument to make, Joe.
Well, you know, Gary, I appreciate what you went through, but I'd like to take that chance.
But Joe, no, 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 it's more of a chance because when a judge comes down and says, "Hey, you guys were wrong, you shouldn't have done that, here's your damages, and you guys are paying for litigation."
Well, the judge has to hear the whole case. He has to hear how contaminated this piece of property is and how it got contaminated. By the way, Mayor.
But Joe, he would also have to go against what our engineer's saying, what the DEC is saying, and the Department of Health is saying.
Well, I'm gonna get to the DEC one second, but I wanted to just ask you a question, though, Mayor. I will tell you right now, your planning board would not in a thousand or a million years turn this project down, not the way I see it, not the way they've been acting. But in any event, I'm gonna go home tonight and pray they do. And then I guess if they do that, Gary, your developer wants to sue, let him sue the planning board, whatever he does, right?
Yeah, I wanna clarify where they are at the planning board stages. Remember, they did the conditional net deck. So they said, "Okay, this project, there's not a significant environmental impact but for the brownfield issues. We're leaving it up to this team, these teams here and our environmental consultant to make sure that that's okay." The planning board now is dealing with this Section 7-1 of our code. They're looking at the.
Wait a minute, but I gotta interrupt you. But nobody in the village wanted what they did. You know that. We wanted a full-blown environmental study, Gary, full-blown study. Who do you think decided on that short term? Who was it? You know who it was? Frank Fish. Did I tell you the truth? That was his recommendation.
He is our planner and.
Yeah, I know, he was your planner, all right. He sold the, he sold the residents of this village down the tubes. That's what he did. My last question, Mayor, and I know there's people that wanna talk, but I do wanna ask the gentleman from the DEC one question. I'd like to ask you one question, and the question is, who do you have to go to, who do you have to go to to stop this project on the welfare and well-being of our children and the human beings in this village? Who do you have to go and see? Is it the governor? Or is it George? Is George your boss? Randy, is George over him or?
Yes, that's correct.
George?
This, this did go all the way up to the commissioner of the agency before it was approved.
Okay, so would you do me a favor? Could you have a conversation with them tomorrow? Tell them that the majority, the majority of the Village of Tuckahoe don't want this hotel. We never had a choice. There was no referendum from this board to get our information on whether or not the residents of this village wanted a hotel. You know that, Steve. You were asked to put a referendum up, and you, and you didn't do it. You didn't do it. But now we're gonna have maybe a different board because your elections are gonna be coming up soon. So in any event, what I'm gonna tell you right now, Steve, you could go ahead and squint all you want. I don't, you know what, Steve? Well, because, Steve, you have a tendency to argue with everyone. And Ray Nuremberg, who sits on the planning board, does the same thing. The developer of this project attacked, attacked the residents of this village, and you want him to build a project in this village. I just wanna ask you a question. Did you, did I hear you right? Rob Exterino, our executive, gave this bill the $30 million?
There was a, there was a $32 million, I think.
$32 million?
Yeah, I think, I believe it was.
And he's already getting all that money from the state on the brownfield?
No, he didn't receive a check for $32 million. He's receiving a tax credit. I think he applied under some, he did apply under a program, and he received some tax incentives, some tax credits in order for him to, yeah, I don't, I forget what the.
You know what, Steve?
Or maybe it was based on a $32 million job.
To me, to me, this whole project smells fishy, and it is fishy, and it's all about the money. And it's all going back to when I went and served my country during the Korean War, when I came home and smelled that filth, that every mayor from the 50s to this day did nothing. And somebody called me recently who seen me on television and wanted to know who the mayors were. I told him, "Come up to the village hall, all their pictures are hanging. So go from the 50s right down, and you'll know every mayor that shut their eye, did nothing." But you know what's bothering me, Steve? The money. I would like to know what happened to all that money and who got that money. And so I'd appreciate, Kevin, if you talked to your boss and tell him that the village residents don't want this project, don't want.
Before, sorry, I just have a question for Gary, it's a follow-up question. So Gary, if the board were to vote to have a moratorium and was wrong, in other words, from what you're saying, as I understand it, is the grounds to challenge based on a moratorium seems to be shaky for the, from the board's perspective because a moratorium is based on, when you're stepping back and taking a look at a certain type of development, for example, that you say may not be right for the village, such as a hotel or a fast food chain, et cetera. So you're on shaky ground. What is the impact to the damage exposure to the village if they get it wrong on an Article 78? Can you tell me that?
It's up to the judge, they can award damages.
All right, I understand that. But what are we, are they consequential damages? Are there, is it lost profits? Is it, and is there a bond that needs to be posted? What is the, what is the potential remedy for the developer if the board got it wrong? And then what would, and consequently, what would the taxpayers be made to pay?
They'll argue everything. So it's potentially, like you said, actual damages. It could be a number of things that a judge imposes. If the judge comes in and says, "Listen, you know, you didn't listen to your experts, you didn't listen to DEC, you didn't listen to DOH, you didn't listen to any of these things."
Much closer, please.
Okay, sorry. So you didn't listen to your experts, you didn't listen to DEC, you didn't listen to DOH, and you went out on a tangent and stopped this, or sought to stop it before a judge, and you lose, you have problems. You're gonna have damages, and that's gonna be up to a court, up to a judge, to determine what those would be.
Do we have insurance that would cover those damages?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the, I would doubt it because then you're. Yeah, I don't know what the, I would doubt it, because then your judge would find that you're acting, you know, in a rogue fashion.
So.
But you're risking, Tom. And again, there's no, there's no set answer. It's hard to answer, as you know, as an attorney, things can happen. It depends what judge you get, what day, you know, what they have for breakfast. It all comes down to a number of different variables. And, you know, you just cross those bridges when you happen. But right now, you have our environmental engineer agreeing with, or, you know, watching over DEC and DOH, not that they need, you know, not that they need watching over, but they're watching it on our behalf. And again, they've said that they're here for us. And if the board takes a stance where, wait a second here, we don't agree with any of you, it's a tough argument to make.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Ariel Frost. I live at 41 Sylvan Avenue. There's been a lot of talk tonight about the air monitoring. So just coming from a place of wanting to understand things so that you can then make an informed decision, I want to kind of go step by step through how that works and get into the details. So let's just have a give and take here. There's the equipment that's on the site, and that's just in the perimeter of where they're working currently, or it's the whole perimeter of the site to start.
Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of individual work areas on the site. And when they're in each of those areas, it will be specific to what could come out of those areas. Additionally, we monitor upwind, and we monitor downwind, and we're going to monitor between the work area and the nearest occupied structure. That can change on a daily basis. So it's very much customized to the current situation. In fact, before we go further, if anyone's interested, the consultant for the developer has brought the actual instrumentation that can be used on the site and will be used on the site, if anyone wants to see that.
I'd kind of like to see that, if you could. I know he brought some, I'm curious about this.
We can, to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, again, it's Bill Cannavan, Hydro Environmental Solutions. Just to your point, let's say, let's say we decide to dig this area first. The community air monitoring plan states that we have to be upwind. So if the wind's coming from the south, we have to have a station here. We'd have to have a station here, and then two downwind, okay? So this instrument, they mount on a tripod like this, and there's four of them. Want to open that, Dylan, that case? In that case, there's a dust monitor, and there's what's called a photoionization detector. The photoionization detector measures for the vapors, so for gases. So let's give you an example. If that PID and that station was set up at a gas station, and you and I went to fill our cars, it would go off, because it would smell the gasoline, it'd smell the benzene, it'd smell the toluene, and so on, okay? That would be considered a violation, because it's all set in there. It says, if you detect a concentration of a certain level, it lets us know. It hasn't let us know, there's an application that syncs to our iPhones. Dylan knows more about it than I do, because he's done it a million more times. So if he and I are on site, and I'm watching the drillers drill, and Dylan might be sampling a well or whatever, that thing goes off, because it's a violation. It tells him. We come over, we see what the problem is, and I'll give you an example. We were in Yonkers, we have a site in Yonkers, and it went off. And why did it go off? Because one of the contractors parked his diesel pickup right next to the meter, okay? And that was a violation. We notified the DEC, we told them what went on, and work commenced. Okay, so that's kind of how this works. It won't specifically tell us what it is. But here's something else, which hasn't gotten out yet, I mean, been discussed. If we're out there, first of all, we're out there. So everybody's talking about toxic this, toxic that. I'm a husband and father, too, you know? I mean, I got three kids. So don't think for a second that because we're some profit organization, that we're going to be out there endangering ourselves or subcontractors, anybody, okay? If, we're not going to wear, it's Level D protection. Right now, we are at Level D. What does that mean? Boots, hard hat, vest. You know what? It's an excellent question. I don't know the answer to that, because the geotech engineer is Carlin Simpson. If it helps, maybe we'll get one of them here. But I'm a hydrogeologist, Dylan's an environmental scientist, so I'm not going to, I don't want to answer questions like that, because I don't know. All right, but, but here's the situation. I mean, I'm going to answer it. If you give me a second, I'm going to answer it right now. Okay, so if I'm excavating here.
I want a alarm system I can be a point, so when it goes off, the whole village knows.
You have, we have that built in here.
I got a little bit of a problem with that, so, and then the DEC comes down, what happened? Oh, how's the residents? I want a monitoring system in my home. I want the planning board to make sure it's put into the plan with DEC and Department of Health.
Let's, John, let's just let him, let him finish, please. Thank you.
That's my point. I want that machine at my house.
It's not going to happen.
Let's just let him finish. He's getting, because I'm very interested in this whole process.
I'm not because it goes off, it's not helping me.
Well, I would like to let him finish.
Yeah, it is. It is helping you. It helps, it helps everybody. It helps me, and it helps you.
I guarantee you, when those guys are on those excavators and those pile drivers, they're going to have full hazmat suits with.
No, they're not.
Oh, yeah?
They're not.
They're going to be cleaning the air out.
It's Level D protection right now.
When those piles go in that ground and they hit those crumps, and that garbage comes up through that tube like a straw, you're going to have problems. And furthermore, is the odor, is it going to smell? Nobody's talking about, they're just saying, we're going to catch it, and it's going to be clean. Is it going to have a smell to it? Do we have to breathe rotten eggs for the rest of our life? Nobody's saying that, with all due respect. Yeah, I know I shut you down, I ruined your moment. But you don't live in Tuckahoe, buddy. You don't live here.
Okay. Can I?
You live in here now? Yeah, Harrison. Okay. Yeah. Are those machines on it? Like, what if they go off?
Okay, so can I just get back to what I was, okay.
Yes.
So, sir, you were going over the equipment. I have, so it goes off, right? You said it's synced to your phone, you get an alert. So this real-time monitoring, you're conducting it. It's not real-time reporting to the DEC? You're then responsible to report that it went off to the DEC? Okay, so how quickly does that process happen? How quickly do you, I guess it's two things. How quickly do the guys on the ground react? Because you said you don't necessarily know what set it off. So how quickly do they dump water, or dump foam, or figure out what to do? And then how quickly does the situation get reported to DEC so that we know in the meantime, the stuff is not flying out into the air?
The first thing, when the alarm goes off, the.
He's a microphone?
Yeah, you're correct.
So the first thing that we do when the alarm goes off is we'll go to whichever monitor device that went off, and we'll figure out what actually went wrong, what the problem was. And when that is determined, then we deal with the problem, and then immediately call the DEC and let them know what the problem was and how we remedied it.
And so how long, you know, you're familiar with the site, you have somewhat of an idea of what you're going to find there. Give me an example of how long it might take you to respond, whether it's dumping water, dumping foam. Are we talking about minutes? Are we talking about hours? Are we talking about days?
Well, when we go to a site that we're going to be excavating at, we know, we have an idea of what contaminants are going to be there. So we're going to have all of the materials and everything we need in order to suppress whatever may come up there when we start. So it's going to happen within a matter of minutes of the alarm going off.
And that's regardless of, you don't know what set it off, but you still are going to respond. There's kind of a uniform response. You don't know what chemical set it off, but you're going to dump foam? Because it kind of sounds like you need to figure it out.
It's not, it's not compound-specific. Okay, so photoionization, it doesn't detect, it doesn't tell you, there's X amount of PPM of benzene in the air. All right, so when that unit goes off, if it hits a threshold value and tells us, then we know some kind of vapor above the threshold value is occurring, and we need to stop work, see what's going on, and suppress the vapor issue.
And you're saying that this is a matter of minutes, not a matter of, you know, half a day is going to go by? Okay. And what is the threshold? Is it an ambient air level acceptable threshold? Is it a higher action level threshold that sets this off?
Well, for the community air monitoring, Graham, it is actually, let me take a look here. Anything approaching 5 PPM over background. So if we have a monitor and it's hitting 1 PPM, 2 PPM, folks on site take a look at that and say, hey, there's something going on here, and we'll, there is a fraction of that, they don't wait till it hits 5 PPM. They start looking at it. When it starts approaching 5 PPM, then they stop work activities, and these monitors can be set to certain threshold levels, and they do a corrective action. And this does happen within moments. Now, an action level is just a screening tool to make sure that there is a need for correction, corrective action. Doesn't mean that there is exposure occurring. It just means that there's, it's a screening tool, they stop work activities, they address the issue. As Bill mentioned earlier, sometimes diesel truck backing up will set off a monitor. We had an incident when the brewery dumped warm hops in their dumpster. That set off a monitor. They're very on target with what's going on on site, and this does happen within minutes.
Okay, so 5 PPM doesn't mean anything to me as a layperson, but if you're describing things like a brewery dropping, you know, or a diesel truck giving something off, so it sounds like it's a low threshold, something that.
Yes, it can be. I mean, even Marbledale Road is a very commercial area, so they are going to be seeing some of these monitors going off if they're adjacent to the roadway and you have heavy truck traffic.
See, that just makes me question how this is effective, though, because then these are going to go off because a big truck goes by, and they're going to start dumping foam and water on things.
Well, they're going to take a look at what's happening on site and see, for example, if they're having a health and safety meeting on site, and they have the monitors all calibrated, and they are doing background samples, and then monitor goes off, and there's no site activities going on, then they can visually see that, hey, it's the truck traffic, or maybe it's the drill rig backing up, that type of thing.
And there's a monitor at the work zone right where they're working, so it makes it even more conservative. So the number is conservative, and it's conservative with respect to the contaminants that are present on the site, the volatile contaminants. The, yeah, okay. And he's got another meter that he can tell you about. But because they're doing it right where, say, they're excavating, they would know if that that one started to get close to the limit or exceeded it. You're still well away from the property lines or the next occupied building, and there's more monitors between the work zone and the occupied building. So it's, all in all, it's a very conservative plan that allows them to react when you get concentrations at a very low level. And that, as Renata said, that level is our trigger to act. It's not a number that indicates that there's an adverse exposure either on the site or off of the site. So that, maybe that point hasn't really been clear.
So if the alarm goes off and they act at that point, is it safe to say that it's going to be 100% contained each time they respond?
Well, they'll have, they'll be monitoring in real time, so they'll know that what they've done has addressed it, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm saying, if a monitor goes off, it's because something was released in the first place. So when they respond, kind of suppressing it down, is that response 100% effective? Or do you already have the risk that something was released into the atmosphere, and this is going to happen multiple times during the course of the development?
No, I mean, that's, you know, the goal is to stop whatever caused that emission, and then maybe you modify your plan. So maybe you reduce the active size of the excavation. There's ways to adjust based on what you're, what you're seeing on the site.
And, okay, and I think I'm coming to the end of this. When this goes off, they respond, they report it to you in what timeframe? And then what do you do? Is there, if there's a repeated number of these things, or it's beginning to become concerning, do you take further action?
Sure, yeah. The work plan or how they implement the work would then.
So you can adjust the remediation plan on an ongoing basis, depending on.
Yeah, new information. That would be new information, which would cause a change, sure.
And I know I'm asking successive questions, so that's why you didn't answer it. But how quickly do you find out that an alarm went off?
Oh, I said, I think, they said they call within, you know, minutes. You know, they get the alarm, so. We know because there is a, there's documentation, I'm sorry to jump back to that question. There's documentation, so we will know, we would know after the fact, but the plan, that's not how we're going to operate.
Have there ever been failures to report that have been cited by the regulator, where consultants working on behalf of the developer fail to report instances where the monitor goes off? Or they don't turn on the monitor?
Well, like we mentioned earlier, there will be a DEC presence on the site routinely.
Is that every day, routinely once a month, periodically? What does that mean?
No, it's more than once a month. It's probably every day at the beginning, certainly. If we need to be there every day, we're there every day. We do. That data is available. Yeah, it's.
Yep, we're going to have to answer some of, ask some of these questions at the mic, but, yeah. Because we're missing.
I'm sorry, we're jumping ahead of the person at the microphone.
Okay, and so when this is all done, and the soil vapor extraction venting system is in place, you said there's going to be continued monitoring by a certified environmental consulting company. How often do they report to DEC? Is that, because now it's over, it's done, right? Is it a monthly basis? Is it if there's an incidence of a problem?
Right. The monitoring is not. The treatment is continuous monitoring. The sampling is not continuous. So there would be, there would be a periodic reporting process.
I'm not sure I understand that.
So if. Yeah. Yeah, so it depends, but typical would be a quarterly reporting process at the beginning, and then after you get, you know, years of data, then sometimes that becomes less frequent. But it's always sampled at the frequency that the site management plan requires.
So how would it come to your attention if the treatment equipment had failed, if, and you don't find out till maybe three months later, if you're getting quarterly reports?
Yeah, no, they typically would let us know.
They would know? How would they know?
They would know when they get the sample data, so.
Okay, so those events put out numbers to them, and they can.
It's actually samples that are collected and sent to a laboratory. Typically, that's typically how it's done.
Okay. My baby's crying and is hungry, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Dardano. I live at 62 Chestnut Street. Perception is reality, and if, I don't know if all of you have, I know the people that were here, but for all of you that are still here, you really need to go look at the April, April 14th, correct me if that was the, and at the end of that meeting, the developer got up. And the developer got up and said that he was cleaning up the site and berated some of the people here. And that sort of attitude is part of why we have such skepticism. And it was recorded. I'm not making it up. I saw it, I watched it, I was horrified.
Oh, I would watch, I couldn't believe it, yeah.
And I'm glad you brought it up, because I was horrified. I was like, you've got to be kidding me. This is how you win friends and influence people? So given that that's his attitude, and so all these protocols are wonderful, but then it makes you think, well, he wants to make money, which is fine, because we're a capitalist country, okay? That's fine. But does he, is he going to do things that are going to maybe try to get around that? Maybe, maybe you guys are going to watch him, that's great. But I don't think you can give us 100% ironclad guarantee that any vapor, dust, and we know water's coming out, but forget the water for a moment, vapor and dust is not going to leave his property, because once that stuff leaves his property, it doesn't become a private property issue, it becomes a public issue. And that's the issue. And you guys are, and I appreciate the work you're doing, and it's hard, because you've got to go around the whole state and do this stuff, and I get that. But that's what we're worried about. I don't have kids, but you piss off the mothers and you start something and that's what you did. You know? That's why we can't drink and drive, which is good. But it's good. But my, but my, my point is, is that's the problem we have. And although some of the answers have been helpful, there's not that, you know, 100%, you know, Ronald, trust but verify, Will, trust but verify. We don't have that yet. And that's why we have our skepticism and we will continue until we get that, but at least I feel tonight there was some progress. And Tom, I want to also mention, I think what Joe said, your questioning was very good. And Mayor, also the fact that you brought up what you brought up about the concern about the developer is, is enlightening. I appreciate that because I wasn't getting that vibe before.
And I just, I also want to comment on something you said too, which is whether it's this developer or any developer, I mean, let's face, let's face facts. A developer starts to build a site and he's gonna do, he needs to maximize his profit. That's, everyone gets up in the morning and they, you know, they take a shower, they put their clothes on, they say, I'm gonna go to work today to make money. They don't say, I'm gonna go to work today to lose money. I mean, I, I've never met anyone who, you know, genuinely wants to spend their, their career losing money. That's just not the way it works. We all know that. So I've said many times that it's our responsibility, you know, what, what can we do about this? Well, what we can do is we can go ahead and hire the best of the best. And, you know, no offense to the environmental engineer, Mr. Hughes, that Rachel has hired, but I believe that the guy that we hired here is the best of the best. Mike Musso and the firm of HDR is, there's, my opinion, there is none better. And he has actually made a personal commitment to this village and to this project. And I am gonna make sure that the planning board gets a message from this board that one of the conditions, if this site is ever approved, one of the conditions is that there is money that the developer will put in an escrow account that we can go ahead and draw down upon where I can go ahead and have the best of the best, whether it's him personally or representatives from his firm live at this site to make sure that everything that everyone has been talking about here tonight that's supposed to happen is gonna happen. And you know what? It's not gonna be at the taxpayers' expense and I believe that that is the one area that we can, that's something that we can do and damn well that's something we are gonna do. So that's...
That's the case, yeah. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Osborne, 118 Webster Road. I am an Eastchester mom and I was here once before, I think in June. And I keep hearing about procedures and regulations and I have a lot of respect for the people who are doing their jobs and I don't doubt the data that they have, but I think that the real question is not what we are hearing and the answers that are being answered, but the information that we don't have and the information that we don't know. Regulations, government regulations were put into place as minimum standards for people to follow when people were not following safe procedures. And I think that, you can correct me if I'm wrong, somebody else has said it already, if the developer or the buyer were to walk away from this deal, this site would become a superfund P site, meaning that it would require more extensive testing and that we would learn a lot more about what was under the ground and we would learn a lot more about how to remediate it safely. Would it be tented? Would other parts of the town need to be tented? And I think that sometimes money, $32 million apparently buys a lot of the lives and welfare of kindergarteners these days. Politics, business and government get in the way of people making common sense decisions. And I really, really want to know why, just like my seven-year-old wants to know. What is the reason, mommy? Why if they can ask the developer to do these extra tests, like the superfund P site tests, why won't they? Why if it would make it safer for us? And you know what? That's one of those questions that I can't find the answer to on the internet, I can't find the answer to in church. And I don't think any of us understand, why won't you ask them for a full environmental impact study? Why won't you make the requirement? Why won't you ask the planning board? And that's my question to all of you. Why won't you ask them to do the tests as though it was a superfund P site before any building can take place, before any remediation of things that we don't know about after they're out there can happen? Why?
I'll try to answer it as best as I can, which is you're, you're making an assumption that the current testing, but I'm relying on not only the current testing, but all of the additional testing that I've been told, not only by the folks from Albany who we all in this room are paying for them, for their service, but also from our environmental expert. And he has reassured us that the current testing, the additional testing is adequate, is, is certainly adequate enough. And I know that that's not, that's not an acceptable answer for you, I get it.
I think adequate means minimum and I think that's the problem.
No, 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 I don't say, no, I don't believe it all.
That I'm having.
Okay. That it is acceptable and appropriate, whatever term you want to use. And I understand that there are some people that is never gonna satisfy them and I, and I respect that, that's, that's okay.
And I fully believe, and I came here last time saying, a remediation would be awesome. A hotel, great, I'm a capitalist, build the hotel, jobs creation, that's a whole nother bag of chips, it's another conversation. But I think that we can do better. I think we can do better as a town, as a community, as people standing side by side. And I think we can ask this developer to do better.
This gentleman here is from HDR, I think, oh, sorry about that. And he, or the gentleman who you've seen for months and months, Mike Musso, he couldn't make it tonight, he's not here on purpose. He's, he had something that he had to attend, he could not be here tonight. So I don't know if you want to speak to that?
Again, I've not been involved with this project. I just came on about a week ago, you know, and started looking at some of the data. But looking at the site, they, you know, right now, the site has no cap. And with this development and with the, the cap, once they grade it, it will be more protective of, you know, of the area. And the controls that are in place during the remediation work are procedures that have been put in place with the DOH and the DEC and have been used on hundreds of sites. And, you know, they are able to provide data, you know, early warnings, real-time data for the, the crews on site to assess what's going on, you know, whether an alarm goes off, assess whether it's source-related or work-related, or sometimes it can be related to something else going on like diesel fumes. But the work plan that has been put in place, I believe is definitely protective of the environment and of the people, of the local, you know, area.
So I also keep hearing after it's capped, after the development is done, everything's gonna be great and that's awesome. But it's the during that we're all concerned about. I know Eastchester parents who are scrambling to try and find backup schools to send their darling four and five and six-year-olds because they are concerned. I know property owners who are thinking about putting their houses up for sale and are speeding that along because they are concerned that once this happens, it might not be so easy to sell their homes. And forget about all of the most important stuff. Forget about the fact that we could be prepared better than we are and that would cost money, but it would not cost lives. And I don't understand. And I just leave you all to think about that why with your God, with your family, with your children, because that is who this is affecting. It's everybody's children. It's not just my children. These are the children of Eastchester. This is an entire generation of people, a generation of families that might, but we don't think, will have to go through chemotherapy with their seven and eight-year-olds and might, but we don't think, will have reproductive and neurological issues with their kids as they get older. This is the stuff that can ruin things. It can ruin things. And we have a lovely community here and we all work so hard to make it stay lovely. And something like this, it would be really, really sad on a lot of different levels. So that's all I wanted to know was the why.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, before you, before you speak actually, I just wanted to say that I very much appreciate, everyone came down from Albany. I said that I thought we would be out of here in two hours when, after we started, 10 o'clock to 10:30. It's now 11:30. So we're just gonna, the last speaker is gonna be the woman in a purple dress back there? Okay, she'll be our last speaker for the evening, so...
I'll be brief. I took my husband, I'd be home at like 9:30.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could, could I just, could I just address a point from the...
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to, for the record, clarify a misconception. We have guidance in DEC on how a site has to be investigated. We follow that guidance. We follow it on the superfund sites, we follow it on the Brownfield sites, we follow it on every site that we work on. And there, this was not a substandard investigation. We make sure when we review a work plan and approve a work plan that it, it complies with our guidance. It's the same guidance. It's DER 10. So I believe that this was a competent investigation.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Marianna Principe and I live at 14 Bronson Avenue in Eastchester, Scarsdale technically. I'm here because there's a lot of talk about this being the 11th hour of all this happening. And I can't speak to everyone else, but I moved here in May, I found out about this on Friday and I'm here tonight and I have two small children at home. And they will be going to Waverly School in the future. And in the three days that I've had to look at everything, it just seems like there's a lot of holes. Now, I moved here from Brooklyn, actually, a block from the Guanis Canal. So I know a little something about living near a superfund site. Now, that was designated as superfund site by the EPA in 2009. They're still doing testing. There is active construction on the banks of the Guanis Canal. The city approved a spot rezoning. I feel like I'm living through the same nightmare, only I moved somewhere more polluted than the Guanis. So, um, a couple of things for, I'm sure most of you in this beautiful town haven't lived through pile driving. I have. It's extremely disruptive. It's extremely loud. You could hear it for miles in Brooklyn. The dust that's created, in fact, it was so loud, they had to come in and say that they were at decibels that harmed human hearing because the developer did not put the proper safety precautions in place. Okay? You couldn't, no, no. It's unrealistic, I realize, to say that this site should not be developed and there should be no remediation because remediation could probably be a really good thing. But there is a way to do remediation and it is not piecemeal and it is not part of one part of the site, the spot where the hotel is gonna be, where the innocent tourists are gonna come in and, you know, spend their whole honeymoon or vacation or visiting family or whatever it's gonna be. And it's certainly not... You gentlemen have an opportunity here. This is a huge opportunity for Takahoe. You could become leaders in environmental standards and, and leaders nationally in a way to do things and a way to clean things up and a way business should be done. Or we can be Palenque Park and in 15 years, when our kids have leukemia or whatever else, we can all remember this moment and say, we could have changed it and we didn't. So I just urge you in doing your business that you think about a better way to do business. And I understand that, you know, these gentlemen are all working hard, but isn't there a larger problem here when the person making the building is the person hiring the one who cleans it up? Now, the remediator might be the best remediator in the world, but their first job is to respond to their employer, which is the developer. Who pays them. And I, I just think that on this precipice, you, it could be so much better. And I hope that you gentlemen remember that when you do make the decisions that are in your power to make and I understand it's private property and all these things. But aren't, there was a lot of talk about we're not unique, this is happening all over the country. I lived in one of the places where it is happening. But you know what? My children are, are unique to me and I would do anything for them. And I think all these people would stay here three and a half hours just to tell you that same thing, so I hope that you take it to heart.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laurel Gaffney. I am a resident of Eastchester. I live on 22 Joyce Road and I have a five-year-old son who is gonna be a first grader at Waverly this year. But that's not really why I'm here, like he is obviously a concern being at Waverly, but I'm really here because I'm very concerned about the residents that live around this site. I am a structural engineer. I am licensed in the state of New York. I've practiced in the state for over 15 years. I have seen a lot of development. I've worked on a lot of projects with big foundation systems and I have seen, I've worked with great developers and I've worked with really bad ones. And I am so worried about this because I see this guy picking, and he knows that those other sites are labeled as superfund. He is picking the cheapest place to put that building in because he knows he has to do the least remediation if he puts it right there. Is that the best place for that hotel on that site? Nope. But he doesn't want to clean up the superfund site. And when I was sitting here earlier, I heard someone say, oh, they're driving piles, it's much less, you know, disruptive. And I literally laughed out loud. If you think that driving piles is less disruptive to the soil that's there, you are kidding yourselves. Driving piles, like the woman who just spoke here, it is loud, it causes major vibrations in the soil, it is horribly disruptive to the soil that's around it and the residents and, you know, the noise is one thing, but I'm much more concerned about the fact that they're driving piles down. They have to be going to bedrock unless they're friction piles. I mean, they, they, I don't think they're friction piles, they're definitely not because they're going through fill. So these things have to go down, I don't know, do we know how deep the bedrock is? 50, 100 feet down? And they're testing to what, 15 feet deep in the soil? Does that make any sense that they're only testing to 15 feet? They are gonna be disrupting the soil down to 100 feet. There is groundwater there. And the thing with groundwater and with contamination is that the two, the worst times for contaminants to get into groundwater is when it's first dumped and then later when it's disrupted. And that's what these piles are doing and what this construction is gonna do. This is not the right way to have this developer remediate the site. He needs to come in here, test the whole site thoroughly, and what should be done is he should remediate the entire site before anybody builds on it. That's just how it should be done, unless you want to cause major problems. And I feel really bad for anybody that lives downstream from this site because I, I don't even know, the one question I have for the DEC and the people that are here in regards to groundwater, because I don't think the groundwater has really been touched enough in this discussion. You say that you're gonna have wells set up to test to see if stuff is going into the groundwater, but what happens when it turns up that there is? What, how, how can you stop groundwater flow once the contaminants are in it?
Well, we, there's very...
You can't, right?
There's very, sure you can, but there, you might not need to stop groundwater flow. You might need to stop the contaminant, contaminant migration. And that can be done in a number of different ways.
Okay, but how quickly can that be done? Yeah, well, you guys don't know, right? You have an idea. Okay. I'm sure the residents that live downstream of this are really happy that you guys have an idea. I mean... It depends on how, what the groundwater is like down there. There can be rivers underground. I know it's not drinking water, but groundwater moves to people's yards, water comes up through the yards. I mean, it's contamination that's spreading. Doesn't matter if it's drinking water or not, it's spreading contamination. Anyways, that's all I have to say and I guess I didn't get an answer to my question, but thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Moran. Thank you.
Walter Moran. I'm the superintendent of the Eastchester School District, and I'd like to thank the mayor for the opportunity to address you and the Tocco Village Board tonight. I profess no expertise at all in scientific data relevant to the brownfield cleanup program that we're discussing tonight. I have read the DEC decision document and the fact sheet, and in addition, have read the Hughes Environmental Consulting Report, including its conclusions and recommendations. The Eastchester community entrusts to me the responsibility to educate their children and to provide for their safety, health, and well-being in so doing. The Waverly Elementary School campus, as you well know, a school for our district's five and six-year-old children, is located two blocks to the east of this property. So I'm sure you can understand fully and appreciate the concerns expressed by our parents and the community in view of the proximity of the Waverly School to this site. As you consider next steps, and the planning board as well, I urge you, I urge you to exercise your due diligence, to exercise the courage of your convictions, and take into account, as you do so, the 530 students in kindergarten and first grade, and the more than 50 members of our faculty and staff who come to that Waverly School each weekday morning with a smile on their face to teach and to learn. Because not only are we teachers and nurturers, but we love these children. We all love them. Our community does. Our parents do. We love these children. They're our precious treasure, and they are our future. This evening, prior to your meeting, the Eastchester Board of Education passed a resolution to hire an environmental consultant to help us to answer some of the difficult questions that have come up about possibilities for evacuation and safeguarding our students. And we will do everything that we need to. We trust that we would be notified in a moment if there were an issue and that we could safely make decisions to safeguard our students. This is not the way I would like to be devoting my time and energy, but we do what we need to do. But again, I ask for your diligence, and again, the courage of your convictions, and I thank you for your respectful consideration.
Thank you, and I'm very glad to hear it, too. Thank you, Dr. Moran. I'm very glad to hear that the school board also is --
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Anthony Laurie, and at the end of my name is SR for senior. My son is junior. I don't have no ACC next to my name, DDS, MD, or anything. But you know, I got back from a cruise three weeks ago, and I was talking to a man, and I asked him where he was from. He said he was from Babylon, and he had to move out there because his wife's family was there. He says, I lived in a beautiful village nine years ago. He says, and I'll never forget it. I said, where's that? He said, you wouldn't know it. I said, well, tell me. He said, Tocco, New York. I almost fell off the chair when I heard that. I says, thank you. He says, where do you live? I says, Tocco, New York. I've been there all my life, 67 years. And I know all you gentlemen are taking a lot of heat up there, and I extend my sympathy to you, but this is your job. I know that. And I know you all take an oath to uphold the law, to be true to everybody, and to hold your hand on the Bible. Trustee Lucy, I really felt hurt when you told me I better stop telling people what I did. I worked for a contractor. I heard that young lady talking here before, telling how piles driven, how it makes noise. The houses across the street from Cottle School, we built some of them. There was pile drivers there. People used to come out and yell at them because they were disturbing the ground and all that. And you told me to tell, stop telling people what I dumped in there. I worked for a contractor in there. Do you want to know something? Most of the people, when this hole was open, are probably dead and gone. Who's left in this town is people like me, if they're still here. You know what? The people of Tocco themselves are just as much to blame. They put their trash out in the curb. Every morning, Tuesdays and Thursdays, they picked up their trash. Now, should we blame the DPW highwaymen who picked up, put it on the truck, and went down there and dumped, Greg? So why are you telling me I better stop telling people? Let me finish. Like you told me before I was speaking, you told me, you finish. I was working for a contractor. And then, in those days, nobody knew none of this stuff, all this environmental stuff, whether it was asbestos or toxic waste or dead animals or stuff that was burned on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They just went there to dump. Should you tell the people of Pelham that they were part of this dumping here, the people of Eastchester, the people of Bronxville, all dumped in that hole? And should you, you said monetarily, too. Didn't you say that? You said that. So do you want to take my full savings, all my life? I've been in this village 67 years. I'm just trying to help you gentlemen who weren't here when that hole was open and the stuff that was dumped in there. Sure, I'm a part of it. I'm blamed. You want to put some blame on me? But there's a lot of people in this community that are long gone. May they rest in peace. But they put their trash out every day. So are they part of the blame also? Are the village drivers from the highway department part of the blame? That was really a silly statement to say that. I just told you the truth, just like you took an oath up there. You put your hand on the Bible. You had the judge swear you in. I had to put my hand on the Bible when I became a fire commissioner. I have to tell the truth. You want me to tell the people I didn't do that? I was an 18-year-old guy. I was trying to make money for the summer.
You did the right thing.
And I told you the truth. You want me to come here and tell the people, no, I didn't dump it. I just made a scene up there just to get the village board mad at me? I didn't do that.
You were second to apologize.
I worked. I worked hard. I didn't go to college. I worked, and I went to the College of Hard Knocks. That's where I went. So then, like I said, the only thing behind my name is SR because I'm senior. That's all. And I tip my hat to you guys for taking all this heat tonight. This is part of your job. Some days you go home early, some days you go home late. So.
Now, can I answer?
Go ahead. I'm listening.
I'll speak to Mr. Laurie. My comments were not for you to be secretive about what you've done. So this is what we call -- Because I said earlier, whatever I say, if it's not being, if what's being said by the experts is not being understood or accepted, then whatever I say. But I will say to you, and I'll say it again, I wasn't implying that you should not have said what you said. I just wouldn't keep on saying it in light of the fact that DEC has now made it quite clear that they will be pursuing the parties responsible for the contamination. That's all.
But Steve, I mean, Greg, I'm sorry. I just told you what I did. You want me to tell you I played baseball and I broke a window? I want me to tell you that? I mean, I told you what I did. I didn't do nothing wrong. I was following the orders of my boss, may he rest in peace, too, and all those gentlemen that I worked with, long gone. Joe knew three quarters of them. My parents put trash on the curb. Joe's parents put trash on the curb. The village men picked it up like the normal weekday trash. Put it on the truck, and those trucks went down there and dumped it. That's all. They didn't do no harm. I didn't do no harm. I was following the orders of my boss. If my boss told me to go dump it in Chicago, I'd have to go in Chicago. But in the meantime, what am I going to do? Get fired because I don't want to cooperate with the guy? I'm doing my job. No one knew that that stuff was going to come up like this. No one knew all this stuff that Burris Welcome dumped in there is going to come up like this, but it's here. We're suffering with it. Sure, I'm part of the blame, and so is all the other citizens of this village and town are part of it. So is Bronxville, Pelham, everybody who dumped in there is all part of the blame. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Last speaker of the night. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for your patience.
And I'm going to leave you with, I've got a question, but I am going to leave you with something to think about when you all go to bed tonight. And my daughter was sitting here, and she really wanted to say something.
Just give us her name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Natalie Clonaredis, and I live on 94 Webster, Webster Road, and it's Scarsdale, Eastchester. And she was really, she really wanted to say something to you guys, and I do have a question to follow that. But she said to me, she said, mommy, I'm too scared to go to school because I'm scared they're going to make me sick. And I want you to go to bed tonight and just think about those words from a five-year-old who's starting kindergarten, who has just moved halfway across the world from South Africa for a better life, and we are now faced with potentially her being poisoned. And she is so excited to start kindergarten until I had to explain to her today that if you go to kindergarten, you stand a chance of being poisoned, and we may not be able to send you. We may have to keep you at home for another year. And I want you to all think about that when you go to bed tonight and look at your children in their eyes and think about how I have to now face her and explain that to her. So that was my first point, and that's a point from my daughter. The second question I actually have is, what kind of studies have there been done over the past, I don't know how long this dumping's been happening, I believe since the '40s or the '50s. What kind of studies have been done on the area in terms of the impact on the health of the residents in the area, regardless of this development going ahead or not? But in terms of, I'm hearing stories about high cancer rates in the area and so on. And I'd just like to understand what type of studies have been done.
Not, I don't know of any studies that, you mean specific medical studies of people who live in the surrounding area? There was a woman who was here at our meeting last month, and she said that she had compiled some data on that. I'm not sure who commissioned her to do that. I don't know.
But would that not be a responsibility of, I mean, obviously, I'm new to this country. I don't know how the system works, but I would expect that that would be the responsibility of the board, of trustees over here, to commission that type of research to understand what type of impact there has been on residents over the course of the last 50 years?
Issues like that, the Department of Health would definitely weigh in on that.
Okay, I'll try to give you a little bit of an understanding of what the Department of Health does specifically in terms of cancer. Every single medical practitioner in New York State has to report any incidence of cancer that they discover during the course of their interactions with patients. That data is accumulated by the Department of Health, and the locations of these cancer patients are put on a map, and the type of cancers are mapped. There's actually a website that you can go to at the New York State Department of Health, the health website, that will give you these cancer maps. I haven't looked at them for Tocco, but you'll see throughout the state, there's different areas where there are higher incidence rates for certain cancers. That's one of the primary things that the Department of Health does in regard to cancer. In terms of doing a specific study on the area, it hasn't been done. If there was an extremely high unusual cancer rate that was observed based on this data that's been generated, and this is going back to the, I believe, the early '70s this data has been generated, the Department of Health would identify such an area, and we would do everything we could to identify if there is a specific causal relationship for this extremely high cancer rate. I know it's not going to, you know, put your fears to rest, but I just wanted to let you know that that is something that the New York State Department of Health does. It's something that you can go to our website and look at. If you go to the website, there's a search bar. You can search for cancer mapping, and it'll bring you right there, and it'll give you very zip code-specific cancer rates in areas throughout the state, including Tocco.
I've been sending the Department of Health letters for 40 years. You can hold down there for these meetings on the night, and you have literally just stated that you have not looked at the data for this area. We've been crying about cancer problems. And my dad, 40 years old, I kept writing new people letters, and all goes to work at the county, and they were exhausted. Now I see more of the public attention, mine, the mayor, and everyone else. Could you do us a big favor? Could you look at that study and let us know?
Again, it's not a specific study. It's data that's been generated over the years. I don't know.
Whatever it is.
Right. Have you looked at?
No, I haven't. Now that there may or may not be a Superfund site in the middle of our town, could we do a study now?
You can request a study if you like.
I'm requesting a form right now.
You have to submit a letter. I have to --
Do you have that paperwork?
No, I don't have that paperwork. I can, if you give me your name, and we can communicate tomorrow or within a day or so, I can give you exactly the procedure you need to submit such a request.
But, sorry, to my understanding, it's not just a cancer risk. If I read, there was a paper passed around earlier with a list of all the potential toxins and repercussions. Some of those, barring cancer, are pretty serious.
I understand.
It's far broader than just cancer.
No, absolutely. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. But there is just, there's no mechanism to be able to monitor for all these things that we're talking about. And these are things that happen, and again, I'm not going to, I'm not trying to diminish or whitewash what's going on here, but these, again, these are issues that happen all over the place, and there just isn't a mechanism that we have to address it. We don't even know how a lot of these chemicals interact with our bodies. And we have a very rudimentary --
That's why we're all here.
Excuse me. I'm saying that this is the reality that we live in. We send, we send things to the moon, to outer space, but we don't spend, I'm as frustrated as you that I can't give you a very specific answer that, yes, this is going to cause a problem, and no, it's not.
Because you get up there and you talk, you know, with all the respect, and the DEC, they're probably from Wolf's Falls, but there's a good old town, Tocco, all the way that you talk enough to me, guys, if you want to stay there, you don't want to drive them to all of them. But anyway, that's what I'm saying. We have to be exposed to this, and here's a team of experts guiding them with the couch that nobody's wired. And you cannot give us a definitive answer as to what we're going to be exposed to and how big the exposure is going to be. Plus, the monitoring system is not even going to distinguish what is coming out of the ground. An alarm will go off, and then how is it going to be ascertained what it is? I know nobody even addressed the issue when you drive the piles. It's always going to come up like this.
The pile driving issue is something that's going to have to be looked at, obviously, okay? But that's, that's kind of, all right. Again, I don't know. Do you have any, I'm trying, I'm trying to help here. I'm trying to give you some answers. There, a lot of times, we just don't have the answers, and that's very frustrating to us because we have to stand up. Of course, it's scary. Absolutely, it's scary. I know.
I go to a doctor, and you have prostate. You go to the doctor, what can you do? I don't know.
All right. Again, I, we can argue a bit. We can talk about this for hours, but it's going to be --
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to just jump in here. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I must just make my last comment. Obviously, coming from Africa, okay, I am completely flabbergasted that in a first-world country such as the US, that this type of thing can possibly happen. Because certainly in my country, this kind of thing is just not even imaginable, even as corrupted as it is. I'm just, I'm just flabbergasted, I'll be honest, you know, that this kind of thing can even be on the cards. Ken.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the entire, the teams that came down from Albany. I know it's been a very long evening. Get home safely, and appreciate your coming. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight. So moved. Do I have a second? Until next time, Tocco, have a very safe evening.